Good evening. Welcome to the Oxford Public Schools School Committee meeting of Monday, June thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, six P. M. Please note face coverings and masks are optional in all school buildings until further notice. Regular school committee meetings are videotaped by Oxford Cable Access and broadcast live on the town's public access educational cable channel one ninety-four, which is also streamed live on the Town of Oxford website, cable access webpage. Video recordings of regular meetings may also be viewed subsequent to the live broadcast via the town's YouTube channel, which may be accessed from either the Town of Oxford website or the Oxford Public Schools website. Thank you. So I'd like to call the meeting to order. We have quite a long agenda today and a lot of people in the crowd. It is great to see people's faces. So at this point, I'd like to open the floor to public comment. Comments are limited to topics relating to school business. Speakers must identify themselves by name and address and will be allowed to speak up to three minutes. Although the school committee may hear comments on unanticipated topics, discussion or action on topics not specifically listed on the agenda will be postponed until a future meeting date. So at this point, I would like to open the floor to public comment. Seeing nobody and hearing nobody coming forward, I will close the floor for public comment. We will have a final public comment at the end of the agenda. So I do want to take just a little bit of out of order here. I do want to introduce and have our student representative. She is new to us tonight. Genevieve Bartlett is the new student representative to the school committee. So I know Genevieve has finals tomorrow, but she also has a commitment through the student council that she needs to attend to. So I'm going to turn the floor over to Genevieve.
So we have nothing new from the middle school, but from the high school, our cultural enrichment group is collecting bottles and cans for our Germany, Austrian, Switzerland trip in April. Email missnugent@cnugent@oxps.org if you have any cans or bottles to donate. That's it. It's nothing new.
That's it, alright. Ease your way in, Genevieve.
Yeah.
So feel free to leave at any point you got to leave, okay? If you want to stick around or whatever time you got to leave. So thank you very much.
Welcome to the meeting.
And welcome to the committee.
Glad to have you.
So next, and this, you know, for me as a principal of a school, the chair of the school committee, I was really, really excited to get some emails from some eighth grade students in Mr. Whitaker's civics class. So at this time, Mr. Whitaker and five of his students, I believe Cassidy, Chloe, Gwen, Ava, and Emily are all here. So I don't know if you all want to come up together and kind of root each other on, or you want to come up in teams? You decide how you want to do it. Why don't you all come forward maybe?
Let's figure that out over there. I'll let you know.
Yeah, you can just go right up to the mic and you can, so we can hear you, and then the ladies can come up as well. They're ready.
Hi.
Hi.
So first, I guess I should sort of apologize because I know you guys have been bombarded with tons and tons of emails sort of out of the blue from a lot of eighth grade students. That's me. That's my fault.
Alright.
Three years ago, the state of Massachusetts decided to reorganize the social studies curriculum, and they turned eighth grade from a World History One class to a civics class. And as part of this new curriculum, the state also implemented a mandate for a civics project. And this is the first year since eighth grade became civics that my classes were able to do it. The first two years with all the COVID disruptions and hybrid classes and most of my students not even being in the classroom, I didn't feel like we could really pull a project like that off. I really believe that the kids need to be in my classrooms so that I can guide them through this, and they really need to work together on this. Collaboration is such a huge part of this. So, long story short, this is the first year we've ever tried it, and I had a lot of help in putting this together. Ms. Traynor, Ms. Taborda, Ms. Cassinway, all played a huge, huge part in putting this thing together. But mostly, I want to give credit to the kids because the kids have really rolled with the punches. They are sort of the guinea pigs. This is the first group that I've really tried this out on. We've learned about what works and what doesn't work, and we're going to make changes and make sure that it continues to get better so that this project is something that becomes a real important part of their eighth grade year moving forward for all students in Oxford. Basically, what the project does is it gives my students the opportunity to really take an active role in their community and their society. It gives them a chance to identify a problem or an issue, something that concerns them, and then working with a team of like-minded people, they do some research into that issue. They learn as much as they can about it, and then they start to design steps to try to confront it or address it in some way. But it's more than just simply trying to raise money for a certain organization or putting a Band-Aid over a problem. It's more about trying to address things at a policy level, and that for my eighth graders is obviously really, really new. So this is a real step up for them. They, as you guys are well aware, one of the things, one of the steps that many of my groups have chosen to do is to contact policymakers and decision-makers like yourselves so that things can change on a more meaningful level. And I've had all kinds of groups tackle things from homeless veterans to transgender issues, environmental issues, shelter animals, all kinds of issues. It's been fun to see the kids really gravitate towards things that interest them and to try to find real solutions to these issues. Two of my groups, when they designed their action steps, two of my groups wanted to talk to you all because they believed that that would be one of the best ways to address a problem that they are concerned with. Both of these groups just so happened to have chosen the topic of vaping and vaping in the high school in general. They're not in the same class, but again, they focused on the same issue. So they both, both of these groups wanted to speak with you about their concerns and to basically see what, if anything, you could do at a policymaking level. So I guess I will start with Cassidy and Chloe.
Mr. Whitaker, it looks like Ava and...
Yeah, so Cassidy and Chloe, they don't want to use their presentation. They have just a speech that they've written out, and then Ava, Ava's group is going to use this.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Thank you for that clarification. Welcome. Thanks for coming.
Hello, school committee members and Oxford community. My name is Cassidy Burke.
And my name's Chloe Gavis.
We are eighth grade students, and we are doing a project for our civics class. Our topic is school vaping, and we are trying to solve this problem right here in our school. As students in the school, we want to solve this problem because we have personally seen our peers vaping and ruining their lives because there are no rules to stop them in this environment.
There was just one thing we were asking of you as changemakers in this school. We're asking for vape detectors in our bathrooms. We're uncomfortable going to the bathrooms in our school because of the students vaping and being worried that we might get peer pressured into vaping.
The vaping detectors we are asking for sense the vapor from e-cigarettes and send an alert to whoever's device you hook it up to.
Many schools across the country have seen these devices as very effective in their schools. They have very low false positive rates and long battery lives.
The specific product that we found in our research is called Zep-tive. They are very easy to install and are convenient to whatever problems you might have.
These send alerts when they sense vaping aren't tampered with or have low battery lives. You can attend to any problem.
Also, there are timestamps on every incident, so if you can't attend to the problem right away, you can see what time it happened to see who's in the bathroom at that time.
They are one thousand dollars per device, and there are multiple grants that our school could apply to help fund these devices.
We were unable to reach the custodians in time to see if there were already detectors in the bathrooms, but if you need that information, we will be able to find a way to figure that out.
That is all that we have to propose to you. Please consider helping us with our ideas to make our school a better and safer place. Thank you for your time.
First of all, I just want to commend both of you. It's really difficult to come up and speak in front of a large audience tonight, so great job. I wanted to see if any of our committee members had any questions or comments. Yes, Mrs. Forbes.
I do. Great job. Thank you. What was the name of the device? I missed that.
Zep-tive.
Zep-tive?
Yeah, Z-E-P-T-I-V-E.
Thank you. Great job. Really informative. I appreciate it.
Any other questions or comments from the members? Yes, Mrs. Griffin.
I have heard from some of your other peers that it's an ongoing issue that they have written about, and I really, I commend you guys for coming out here and speaking tonight. That's amazing. I know that I chair the policy subcommittee. I invite you and your peers through Mr. Whitaker to come to some of those meetings, bring your concerns to the table. If there's policies that you think that we should write, that would be amazing. You have more insight than we do what goes on day in and day out, and it's great to hear your voice, and I want you to keep using that voice and keep advocating for your peers in the school because that is how effective change will get made. So this is awesome. This is really exciting.
Yeah, thank you very much for sharing that about the policy meeting. I think that's a great idea.
So maybe we could, I don't know, I kind of put it back to you folks, how you think that might be best, and you can work it out amongst your, you know, maybe your classes and maybe elect somebody to come to policy.
Well, we are, we are realigning our subcommittees.
Yeah.
So depending on who's on that subcommittee, once we have the next meeting, I will email all five of them because they emailed, you know, a bunch of us.
Yeah.
Just let you know when the date is, and you're more than welcome to come. I think it's a great idea to continue this conversation, not just let it end right here at the table.
Yeah.
Other comments? Yes, Mr. Burke?
Yeah, I think I just want to point out too, for the five of you, this is not an easy topic to tackle. It is not likely to make you popular in school, but it's looking out for your peers, which is very impressive that you've put that at the forefront. I'd like to thank Mr. Whitaker for his work on this, and I have heard from several of your other students on other topics, and they're well thought out, well-written emails, great responses. So this is pretty neat to see. So thank you.
Anything final that you want to say?
Nope, that's it.
Okay. Thank you very much. Good job.
So this group is also, they also are going to talk to you about the concerns related to vaping and following. I think everyone should be able to have you do a presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Pelczowski.
Good evening. My name is Ava Vincent.
I'm Emily McDonald.
And I'm Gwen Gustafson.
So as our group together, we've worked to make our project on vaping. It's been like an ongoing issue in our school, which is kind of why we chose to do this topic. Vaping is a big issue because it affects many things, starting at our learning environment. Teachers have explained that vaping adversely affects not only the performance of students who vape, but also the learning environment of those who don't vape. Teachers reported that frequent classroom disruptions, disciplinary problems, and peer pressure to vape regularly impeded daily learning for all students.
So of our ideas to prevent, as a group, we've come up with several ideas to prevent vaping and to further the process of preventing vaping in school. We've sent an email to Blair Brown, who is the Legislative Director and Chief of Staff of Education, addressing our concerns, and we have created and hung up informative posters around our school to further address the concerns, concerns to help our school in the issue about vaping. We've yet to receive a response back from Blair Brown, but we are hoping to hear in the future. And if you look around the school, you will see our posters hung up, and we also, um, sorry, to collect further information, we also sent a Google form out, which did not work out the way we wanted it to. We did not get the information we needed, and it just didn't get sent out how we would like it, so that would be a way we would fix this in the near future if we could do it again. And that's him.
As vaping negatively affects the one using the device, it also affects the others who are not participating in it. Some examples of this occurring include students who are facing peer pressure and students who are distracted by disruptions in class. Stuff like this has badly impacted how students have been learning in their classrooms.
We would just like to thank you for your time and listening to our concerns about this, and I don't think we have anything further to add. Thank you.
Thank you. Committee members, any questions or comments?
I just have a comment. Just because this is your first time doing this sort of project, I think, and reaching out, A, government doesn't always get back to you, so keep pressing on them. But also, oftentimes when you do a study, it doesn't work out the way you want it, like your Google form didn't go as planned, but that's part of the learning process, so good job, and stick with it, and don't let it die because it's important, and I think that, you know, somebody, somebody needs to get back to people who are so proactive, so thanks again.
Thank you.
I would just suggest reaching out to the Board of Health. They might be able to help you and come in and do some training for your peers. I know in the community that I work in, we use the Metro West Health Survey, and I don't know if there's a health survey that's out this way, but that's something that it might be good if the school committee looks into, and, you know, it's an optional thing that young adults like yourself participate in, but it gives schools data, and data is very powerful to understand the whole situation. And then that could help us advocate too with other, you know, representatives that you've reached out. If we get very alarming data back that our school is struggling in particular areas, then we can advocate for funding and other programs and whatnot. So kudos to you guys for your hard work. Thank you.
Yeah. Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, just want to commend you again, girls. I think I've known most of you since you were little, and to see you grow into young women and to take action like this is so impressive, and a compliment to your teachers, to your parents, again, to Mr. Whitaker, so thank you.
So I have a couple, just a couple of questions. So Blair Brown, is he at the state level or is it the federal level? Do you know where?
I'm pretty sure it's at the state level. We were trying to reach out to this one other person.
James Paiser.
James Paiser, but we were unable to find an email address, and this was the next person we could find, and we did have some struggles finding his email address too. So if we don't hear back, we might email someone else and figure out if there's anything else we can find about it.
So if you want, Gwen, if you want to forward me the email that you sent to him, I can send it out as the chairman of the school committee and ask that he gives you all a response, or at least can kind of get back to you. And the other thing I want to share is, I mean, I don't want to mix topics, but in a day in a, in a day in the world that we're in right now, where young people see what happened a couple of weeks ago in Texas and what's happened over and over again, and you come forward and you advocate and you don't see change, I want to, as the chairman of the committee, I want to tell you tonight that we will help support your cause and move it forward at any capacity we can. We don't want you to think that you just came in and this is just going to fall on deaf ears. It isn't. We'll do what we can from a policy level, and certainly, you know, if there's any sort of influence we can use as a board or through the superintendent to push people at the state level, we could certainly get state reps involved down here, you know, and, you know, across the federal, you know, reps if we need to. So I want to thank you for it. If you want to forward me that, I will send him an email tomorrow saying, you know, we want some students to come in front of us. It would be great if you could get back to them and see how you can support them. But I do want to share that we will push this forward as far as we can take it with you because it's a, it's a, it's a cause and it's needed. So thank you so much again for coming in. Next, we have recognition of the district's twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two retirees.
My gosh.
So I'll just go over this. We have a few that have already retired. So Leslie Sullivan retired on eight seventeen twenty twenty-one, was a guidance secretary at the high school and had six years of service with us. Sue Hanershaw retired on September tenth twenty twenty-one, was the Assistant Superintendent of Student Services and Special Ed. She was with us for five years. John Reynolds, who I had the pleasure of working with quite a bit at the middle school, great guy. He retired on October twenty-ninth twenty twenty-one as a tech assistant. He finished at the high school, it looks like, but he was here for thirteen years with us. You know, Rick Vincent retired on four one twenty twenty-two, head custodian, obviously somebody I also had the privilege of working with, and we know, lost him recently, but our thoughts and prayers are still with his family. But Rick served the district for eighteen years. And then we have Patricia Law, who's retiring on the thirtieth, or I guess in the next few days when the school year ends. Foreign language teacher at the high school, was here sixteen years. She could not be with us tonight. We do have three staff members who are present, so I would, when I read your name and what you did and how many years of service, if you don't mind coming forward, because we do have a present for you, and all the other retirees received this present as well. So Maria Cabala will be retiring, will be retiring at the end of the year. She was the ELL teacher. I also had the privilege of working with Maria at the middle school. She's been with the district since nineteen ninety-eight, twenty-four years. Thank you so much. Not to put you on the spot, Maria, if you wanted to say a few words, you're more than welcome to come back to the mic. It's up to you. I'm just going to offer it to all three. If you want to say a few words, you don't have to.
I'm glad you're working with everybody over here. I thoroughly enjoy my stay in Oxford.
Thank you, Maria.
Thank you.
Next, we have Irene Shannon, who will be retiring at the end of the year. She was a special ed teacher at the high school, has been here since two thousand and four, so eighteen years of service to the district. So Irene, if you could come forward.
I think she has an emergency.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you. And Kimberly Davis will be retiring at the end of the year as well. First grade teacher at Chafee School, was hired back in two thousand and seven, so fifteen years of service. So congratulations, Kim, and thank you very much.
You know it.
Really short, it's a blessing to have worked in this town that I live in and have
lived in for a long time with the colleagues that I've worked with. It's been an honor to work with each and every one of you. I've learned from you. I did my best, and I know that you guys will carry on the great work that you're doing. It's, it's, it's difficult to leave, but it's time. So I appreciate everybody, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Kim. Well, sorry to do this to you. I didn't want to interrupt the applause, but you are next on the agenda. If you wanted to come back up, Kim Davis, Union President, is going to give her end of the year report. I believe Tom is coming up as well, Tom Eathier, the new president, right? He's president now, but the incoming president. Correct.
He will start.
Good evening, Mr. Lucas, members of the school committee and the Oxford community. I am honored to continue in the footsteps of Kim Davis. She has been a tireless advocate for the teachers of Oxford over the last seven years. I am in awe of her work ethic. She has labored hard to best represent her colleagues, and I will miss her very much. Whether it was reopening under COVID or a contract negotiation, Kim has never wavered her commitment to do what is in the best interest of the Oxford educators. President Davis will be a tough act to follow. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom. Now I have to follow you. It is with mixed emotions that I provide you this OEA member update as being my last one. I've had the tremendous honor of working for the schools our Oxford students deserve for the past fifteen years. I love my job and hopefully made an impression on the young students as they grew up. It's been also a tremendous honor to represent the OEA for the past ten years, three years as a board member, and seven years as president. This group of teachers are inspiring, creative, and determined, and are like family to me. And like family, we may not agree on everything, but I know that when it comes to the important things, we stick together for the good of the students, the community, and each other. I'd like to list a couple of activities, or some activities, that members have facilitated and attended this year. First of all, graduation, which by all accounts went seamless, and we congratulate the graduates. School dances again happened at the middle school. The sports activities, thank you to all the coaches and assistant coaches for their hard work. Band and chorus concerts, thank you to Mrs. Rutkowitz, Mr. Kim, Mr. Carr for all the extra hours you spent pulling together these terrific performances. A great Memorial Day performance and art show at Barton and Chafee, thank you to Mr. Fontaine and Ms. Sims for all your time and effort. This was the best Memorial Day tribute in years and was appreciated and enjoyed by all. At Clare Barton, the students worked hard to complete several research projects in science, social studies, and literature this year. All of the students put back, put forward their best effort and hopefully had an engaging time completing them. The teachers at Chafee, Barton, and Middle School have been or will be participating in field day or spree day events and field trips as we close out the year. For some students, this is their first one that they've ever had. For others, it's been a long time coming. It takes a lot of time and coordination of teachers, PTO, and parents to have these events go smoothly. The numerous community outreach projects that were put on by various high school groups and classes, too numerous to mention. The donations that they, that they raised and gave to the community and the community organizations were well-received and needed. Thank you for your countless extra hours. I'm sure I'm missing some activities, but I can assure you that the teachers of Oxford work to provide the students a rich and fulfilling learning environment. The OEA proudly awarded four scholarships this year to students. We want to congratulate Matt Grenett, Diego Taborda, Megan Connolly, and Brooklyn, is it Jubert or Jubay? Not sure. We wish you all the best in the future educational endeavors. As we began this year, once again in masks, we were grateful to be full in person with our students. It was not back to normal, but better than the stress of the last two school years. The teachers and staff had managed to keep learning progressing through the more, through more administrative changes with new faces, procedures, and ideas. The social-emotional concerns for students were and are a major concern for teachers, as well as the social-emotional exhaustion that we are all feeling. The back-to-normal attitude put more pressure on staff to feel and act normal through very abnormal times, and we hope that more importance can be given to support all of our feelings of chaos, stress, and despair. We are all still working through COVID and the physical, psychological, and emotional effects it has had on all of us. It saddens me to say that our teachers, as well as other staff, have experienced both physical and verbal assaults at unprecedented levels. We should not have to fear for our physical well-being while teaching, and this was not always the case. The she- We should not have to fear for our physical well-being while teaching, and this was not always the case this year. We are hopeful that policies and procedures can be looked at to provide a safe work environment for both students and staff. I would like to express that I have received so much feedback from the membership as their genuine disappointment is how this year has ended. The recognition for being a model district through the reentry plan, being announced as educator of the year just two years ago from this body, and praise for our continued efforts working with the students have been replaced with a feeling of lack of appreciation and respect, especially when we see area districts rewarding their staff financially with essential worker or COVID bonuses. Every announcement from another district bonus just lowers our collective spirits. I would like to quote a recent article that I read, "Respect Begins With Better Pay." Statistics are showing that teachers are retiring in significant numbers because of exhaustion and a lack of respect for their profession. As I turn a new chapter in my life and Tom takes the leadership of this terrific group of educated professionals, I hope this committee will think about these words and show the fantastic and dedicated teachers that they can do more. Just as we've been asking to do more, asked to do more every day, thank you to all the members from the bottom of my heart for your support. I will continue to support you as a resident of this town, and you have all made a positive impact on my life, and I wish you all the best.
Any questions from Mrs. Davis or Mr. Ethier?
Just a comment, coming on top of teaching to take on the job of union president in first seven years, did you say? Extremely impressive, so thank you for doing that. Absolutely.
Same here, I was gonna say. I know it's not easy, and it's a lot more on your plate when you've got a lot on your plate, and it's a struggle every day. I appreciate the work that you do, and I'll miss you, Kim. And welcome, Tom. Not that we won't welcome you with open arms.
I hope you come back out of retirement. I know that you probably don't want to hear that, but we need you, and it'd be nice for you to, yeah. That would be amazing. We'd welcome you to the table and be very excited to have you. I think that's how a lot of different people kind of made their way here, you know? But I thank you for the, everything that you've done and all your advocacy for the teachers and for our children and our community. I hear the words that you're saying in regards to students and, and their needs, just as much as your needs. And I think our district does need to look really hard at social emotional health for students in addition to teachers. And I see that our teachers partake in some good professional development, but I'm very concerned that we need more mental health staff and psychologists and behavior specialists and other personnel in the district to support the students as much as the teachers. Teachers can't do everything, you know? You guys cannot be the psychologist to all of your students at all times, and you cannot be the behavior therapist to your students at all times. And that's hard because that, also, we have to budget that in. And I think it's very difficult because we have this, the set budget with Chapter Seventy funding and other funding that we get from the state, like every community. I, being a teacher, can say that, you know, there are times too where I feel that there's just not enough money and not enough appreciation. Every teacher, I think, all through Massachusetts deserves a raise, to say the least.
There's more money flowing in education this year than there ever has.
There certainly has been more money, and I will agree with that.
School got a three percent increase.
And there's been a, there's been money, but as you folks probably know, that money has been earmarked for certain things that happen in this district. Some of them, we've all been good recipients of having more support in the classrooms, and it was just with a, a window of time. And all of that had to be written in grants, and it had to be explained, and it had to be measured, and there had to be data, and the money's running out. I wish it was an infinite pot that could continue so we could actually use it for salaries and it could go for multiple years. But that's not how it was designed by the Fed.
I'm talking about use of funds. I'm talking about a three percent increase from the town to the school for next year. More than we've gotten in a long time from this town. I know I'm a taxpayer.
Yeah, and I agree that the town is giving back some money.
I'm not, I'm not, I don't want to get into a tit for tat on that, and I don't want to discuss it. I am honored to work for these, with these people. Thank you for the praise. I appreciate your praise. But it is my honor to represent them. And I try and do it the best I can to represent them all of the time, and no matter how much time it takes. And because they're an amazing group of people. And it is my honor to be here, to be able to speak on their behalf. So that's, that's where I'm at. But thank you. I appreciate your praise for me personally, but it's them who motivate me and their amazing work.
I would just like to add, as I look out to the audience, probably ninety-five percent of you I know and either worked side by side with you, so I know the job you do every day. I know as a principal, I certainly would love to be able to pay people what they are worth. In the educational system, sometimes it just doesn't work like that, right? We have paraprofessionals, and we have people who work so hard, but based on the way the, the structure is, it's really hard to compensate them for what they deserve. I would absolutely love anybody who is non, a non-teacher that lives in town to get out and become part of a committee member. You can see how it all works from behind the scenes. It's not easy. I know there's a lot of signs out there today that are, that are talking about, you know, hero to zero, and, and, and we're not looking, we're looking to work with you. I was not part of this negotiation committee, but I know that, and we can't talk about this publicly, but I know you guys have been trying to work things out. I hope we can get to that point. I want you to know you're valued. I worked side by side with many of you. So I hope you don't feel that this committee doesn't know what you do. We do. We do. And if there's comments that people want to make, come to the mic. Don't be talking out in the audience. If you want something to say, come forward. Would love to hear from you. But I value each and every one of you. I've had kids go through this district. I was an employee of this district, did not want to leave this district, but I had to. Not by my doing, I had to because of other leadership. I would love to, that's why I'm up here, because I want to continue to support the mission of this district, because there are great people. But we need to steer it in the direction. We have a superintendent changing that direction. As he goes into year two, I'm anxiously awaiting, where are we going? We want to work with you, so I hope you feel valued. Like I said, I know each, most of you personally, and you're great people, you're great educators. And we want to do what's right by you, and that's what our job is to try to do. But there's a lot of other factors that people may not know of that we have to deal with as well. So I just wanted to say that. I want to thank you. You know, you can take my words and you can walk out of here and say, ah, whatever. That's fine, that's your choice. But I think if people out there who know who I am, I think you know I'm serious, because I am. I thank you for everything you do.
Any additional comments?
I just have one final comment I should have said earlier regarding teacher safety. That is something that we really need to get the reins on. We really need to protect you guys. I've seen and heard, and not just here, I have educators, friends in other districts, and it's really amped up this year, and that is not something that you should have to deal with. So I personally, as a committee member, am committing right now to reel in the discipline around here. It's a bit of a focus, I hope, for me in this coming school year, because I think a lot of that will help when there is some, some support, some guidance, some hard and fast rules. So again, I'm sorry that you've gone through that, because that is nothing you really should have to do. Being physically abused at work is just not okay.
My thoughts are, I know that whenever there's any type of physical abuse or uncomfortable work environment, we have state laws now that have been passed in, just this past year. We are obligated to report anything, and it goes into the state database. And I don't know if there's been enough training with our teachers. I kind of feel like there hasn't. I don't feel like I've heard enough as a parent. So that's one thing I'm advocating for. There's bullying prevention laws now that are out there that immediately a report should be filed. Immediately, that should be done by administration. And teachers are able to speak up and file those reports. If you witness anything with conduct of children or even other professionals and you feel threatened, we have procedures and we have people that you can report those things to, and they should be addressed swiftly and immediately and stopped. And then that way, everybody's being taken care of. So when I hear this now, kind of as, you know, I'm hearing little things here and there and living them through a parent lens, but when I hear it from you folks as teachers, that even makes me more concerned. And I haven't seen reports, and I'll certainly be asking for more. I'll be asking honestly, like right now, for everyone that has been filed. I want to see that as a committee member this year. Where are they? What were, you know, the concerns that were voiced by you as teachers? And how many incidents were in each building? So I'm making that request tonight. I'm looking for that data tonight so we can use that data again to figure out what the problem is. Because if there's a problem, we need to look for an active solution, and I partner you in that.
Data tonight, but.
No, no, I'm making the request for that. Right. I know we can't get the da, data right now. That would be amazing. I'm not, I'm making the formal request at this meeting for every building for that da, data to be shared with this committee, so we can look into it deeply and figure out what is happening with students, what is happening with adults, and advocate for whatever structures and services we need so it ends.
Thank you. All right, thank you, Mrs. Davis and Mr. Ethier. Just gonna pause a second while the room is clearing out, so there's no disruption on the TV.
Every incident's supposed to be reported. Bye, friends. Bye, friends. We'll be friends tomorrow when we're out of here.
Pirate patch they have today? Is that a pirate? What is that?
I don't know.
All right, Mr. Pelzarsky and Mr. Quinn, why don't we have the, both of you come up, school improvement plans? We'll start with you both. Oh, end of year building reports as well. So I don't know if each school just wants to do both, one at a time.
Bye, Jenny.
Bye, Jenny.
See you next time. Have a good evening. Good luck on finals.
All right, so why don't we, Mr. Pelzarsky, we'll start with you on your building update, and then we'll go to your school improvement plans. So just take it one school at a time. You guys together? All right, you want to just do your individual school updates, the three of you, then do the plans together?
It was really exciting to get back to a lot of, even though we're still not in the normalcy, it was really great to get back to quite a few of our end of the year rites of passages at Chafee. Family fun night, attended by well over three hundred people, a terrific Memorial Day program. We just finished up Field Day last week. All three grades will by Tuesday have, by Wednesday have had a, an exciting field trip. Kindergarten's off to Davis Farmland. Went to Davis Farmland. Grade one will be heading to Southwood Zoo tomorrow. Grade two will be on their way to Mystic Aquarium on Wednesday. Tuesday will be grade K's last day. We'll be preparing for our next batch of kindergarten students by doing our in-person screenings. We were able to do those last year, but we really had to make them kind of staggered by parents dropping kids off at, at the hallway and almost tearing kids away from their moms and dads at some that we really didn't enjoy doing, and we're hoping to break from that. Our step-up days have been going on. Today, we did grade two all the way up to Barton. That was exciting. For a tour and introduction to grade three. Grade K and grade one will be stepping up into their future classrooms tomorrow, so they'll see a picture of what it looks like. Our grade two students will be having their ice cream social on Thursday night at five thirty in our playground. The grade, the transition earlier in the year for grade two coming over to, from Clara Barton to Chafee was seamless. Again, I owe that all to the, to the hard work and dedication of the teachers. Moving classes is never easy, and doing, moving buildings is, is, is an exceptionally large nightmare. They were terrific on that, so we're feeling great about wrapping up the year. Saw a lot of great things this year, and it was just great to start to see some pieces of normalcy again at Chafee.
Thank you. Any, any questions or comments from Mr. Pelzarsky? All right, Mr. Quinn?
Couldn't agree with Rob, you know, getting back to, to some normalcy. Today was the first time I've ever saw the pre-K water day held at Clara Barton. And if you remember the scene in The Brady Bunch, when Bobby puts the whole box of soap in the washing machine and the whole room fills up with soap, that's what it looked like today. Every three and four-year-old in preschool and the staff was having a blast, so pre-K water day was amazing. And our, our afternoon pre-K class has their graduation tomorrow at one o'clock. And I'm looking forward to, to, to attend that, because having the pre-K this year has been a thrill for me personally. I've learned so much. We also have a field day coming up for grades three and four. That will be on Wednesday. As Mr. P said, grade two visited Barton today, and I assured them that this time they will be coming to Barton, unlike last year when we brought Barton to them in second grade. So they've, they've had two step-up days at Clara Barton, but they were great. It was a lot of fun today. We're losing three great staff members just because of some one-year COVID positions. We'll miss them. Grade four did go up to the middle school last week, and I know Ms. Bell Humor's going to talk about that. And in case you didn't know, we had a little fire at Clara Barton earlier in the year, so we will be going to school that one extra day on Tuesday, June twenty-first, but we are, we are ready to go. Yeah, no, the twentieth, the holiday, and then so we will be there, ready to go. Just wanted to thank all the custodians for a hard year. They're going to turn the gear into summer mode, and we will prepare the rooms for, obviously, for the summer school programs that are, that go through Barton. And we will be ready, ready for that. So we're finishing up pretty strong at Clara Barton. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from Mr. Quinn? All right, thank you. Ms. Bell Humor?
So it was really nice, as both these gentlemen said about the normalcy, we're finishing up the end of the year with finishing up our transition for grade eight. Still a few things that need to be organized and done, but we're getting there. So hopefully, over the next couple of weeks, that'll all be solidified and ready to go. You know, we had a great musical this year. They just had a dance, which was very successful last week. Spirit Week, grade four step-up day last week went really, really well. Unfortunately, both of our music people were out, so to Mr. Burke's chagrin, we could not do a performance for them, but we did talk a lot about the music program for them, and we'll do a petting zoo in August as well for kids that are interested, that are coming into the middle school. We'll be sending home some communication to grade four parents over the summer about open house in August. We had three successful field trips. I went on the one on Friday. It was awesome. The students had a ton of fun. We have spree day on Wednesday, and the staff has been working really hard to put that together. And just a shout out to my staff and the high school staff moving down for all of their hard work and kind of going with the flow as we change things and move things and change your room and figure out where everybody's gonna go. Getting ready for summer school, we'll be rolling, rolling that out for grades five, six, and seven in July. And yeah, that's where we're at. I thought it was a very successful end to the year.
Any questions for Ms. Bell Humor or comments? Yeah, Mr. Burke?
Just quick, for those who aren't musically inclined, can describe what a petting zoo is?
Oh, yeah. No, it's not animals. So the, the music and arts program bring all different instruments, and students can come and try them and figure out what they want to play. So they call it a, a musical petting zoo. It's loud for a good hour, but it works, so.
And I would just like to commend the three of you, I think, as much as we hear it and, and agree that it has been a very difficult year or two for, for our teachers. I know firsthand it's been a very difficult year or two for our administrators, so thank you very much for all the work that you guys have put in.
All right, school improvement plans. You guys doing that?
So we really wanted to show how seamless these plans are gonna be this year. I think it's important that we kept the period of action and then talked about the district goals and come up, came up with individual action steps under each of them that relates to the school. We just kind of going through Chafees, and you can see that, yeah, sound all right?
Yeah.
So we really did. We created as a, as a team over a course of a couple of weeks, just talking about ideas, taking the goals, starting with the social emotional and health. You can see the action steps there. All of us, I believe, have breathed a change, as that's a district-wide initiative. Then at Chafee, we do a lot. Then at Chafee, we do a lot with a three sixty-five Z kindness committee, um, and our kindness, um, initiatives. We really want to hold those under the social, emotional umbrella and keep doing those, reinforcing those behaviors. Back up a little bit, we're really hoping for a PBIS mantra, a PBIS scope that'll take us, it'll really take a child through the entire years of their Oxford education. Um, you know, first by PBIS standard, you come up with an ac- an acronym. You build that around your expectations. You teach the kids what you expect. You respect those expecti- you expect those expectations, but not until they're taught. Then you reward students who do those expectations and meet those expectations. At the same time, um, you, you create, uh, 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 the ability to redirect students who don't follow those. Uh, you know, to, in its simplest forms. I know it's a lot more deep than that. We're really hoping to take that scope to really encompass our social, emotional pieces. We may in fact be part of an MTSS grant to attack that even further, similar to what we did with the English Language Arts. Um, and then, so you can see that I have a, an individual Chafees-esque, um, piece there, but then we have a district-wide. By, you know, using common languages, using, building a matrix, talking to kids about what you'd expect to do in the bathroom. What you, cause you really shouldn't expect students to behave in the bathroom if you haven't told them what our expectations are, especially at, at my level. But then, the goal is if you teach them those expectations now, by the time they get to fifth and sixth grade, you know, who know, I'm not saying vaping won't be a problem, but the goal is that that would be the goal. So, um, then we go into our data and are focusing on our, um, learning environments. I think it's safe to say that we, uh, will all be taking a deeper dive into that.
Can we just, can you just pause? You might be just, I'll take it one goal at a time and ask.
Do you want to do all three schools or just mine?
Well, I, I mean, the first school, you kind of, it's all tied in. It, it looks like. So is there any questions or comments? Yes, Mrs. Griffin?
I just think for our community, they, uh, need to understand the acronym PBIS, Positive Behavior Intervention System. I think sometimes we speak the lingo, but everybody else outside of the school committee kind of watching us does not know what is being said.
Similar to a petting zoo for.
Right, exactly, exactly. Yeah, and I'm thrilled that this is, um, an initiative where everybody's gonna get on the same page. I'd love to know like what is the curriculum? What is the thought? What is the system? Cause as we all know, in the world of education, there's an unlimited amount, it seems, of these types of systems that are out there. So I didn't know if there was one that was, you've looked research-based and you say, I'm really going with this, or if it's still kind of up in the air and we don't know yet for the fall.
I think the exciting part about that, with PBIS, you really need a buy-in from staff.
Yeah.
You can't force it on the staff. You can't say, this is what we're doing. You really want to have, and the goal is eighty percent of your staff to be bought into it and to agree that that is an important initiative. I, that was one of those things, when I was in Worcester years ago and this came across, I thought it was another, and just another, you know, latest and greatest. It's really has stood the test of time.
Yeah.
I, I've, I thought I was gonna need a lot of it when I got to Chafee, but I, as you guys know, I was left an amazing school, didn't need that piece. But as Tara and I have been talking culturally across the whole district, we're really starting to see that deeper need. Maybe it was COVID, maybe it was just a change in the environment, but so, um, we haven't, I, I, I speak for myself. I haven't decided or looked at what the goal would be, what the piece would be, how we're going to do it. Um, I just know that we need to start doing something and, and, and get an initiative now and tie it in under all four schools.
So I think most teachers just bring it in with their practice, whatever they might have experienced in their undergraduate work or their masters, like responsive classroom or different things. So I guess it would be great to do an inventory. What already do our teachers know? And does anybody necessarily have training that they can bring to the table? But I really think it'd be nice to know exactly what this will be, to kind of understand the initiative. But I'm looking for that direction anyway. I'm excited that it's.
Part of the work we're gonna do is a team this summer together in July and August, we've got meeting dates set up. So part of this is we want to get everybody on the same page in the district and moving forward together.
And how long do you think it will take to get everybody ready to use that? Do you think with the fall? Do you think it will go to the winter? When do you think you'd have the teacher buy-in and student participation in it?
So first, the admin team's gonna work together. So we've locked off two days on our calendar. This is going to be our big focus. Makes me think of the civics project. We have to get our action steps in order, um, and then put these pieces together in terms of what it is that we are looking for. We see the big goal. We know what we're looking for five years out. You know, we're looking for a, a K to twelve system that a child understands K to twelve, that know whether I am, this is how I show respect, this is how I show integrity. So I show empathy, these, you know, common pieces across the board. Like Rob said, we're not, it's not gonna be challenging. It's going to be very clear, very cut and dry. Right now, we're still in that planning stage, although each school, um, has, K to four has programs that are already in place. They are using Second Step. They also use pieces of Mind Up and pieces of, um, Zones. And they also use other mindfulness techniques that are, that are within that space. So there's tier one instruction already at that K to four space because we have a designated teacher. Um, Amy can talk about the, the program she's been working with with Special Ed that they will be putting in place next year and training staff as well. Our ultimate goal is to roll this out before school begins. Uh, we're gonna contact teachers. We're putting together a, a, a team at each school that will then be responsible to do this work. And again, it, it's a volunteer space, you know, teachers that have this passion and this interest that really would like to see this go forward. We've kind of put our feelers out already. We've gotten a lot of great response from staff. Um, the state also has an MTSS SEL program where they will come out and send trainers to us as well, where we can select, um, whether the school would like SEL support or specifically PBIS support. So we're, we're looking at all the options that are available. We're hoping to get into that program. Our application goes in tomorrow, so within, we figure within a couple of weeks, by July first, we'll get that information. We'll find out from the state if we, we have that support as well. So we are looking to be ready prior to the beginning of school starting. And then like Rob said, we need that teacher buy-in. Um, we don't want to come forward with an initiative and say, this is what you're gonna teach, this is what you're gonna do, this is what you're gonna be because we said so. We want to make sure that they're seeing the value of those pieces. And in order to do that, we do have to do some groundwork first as an admin team and then, uh, help our teachers to create these groups and form these. And all, and our principals have, um, very graciously volunteered to be the leads because we needed administrative lead according to the state in each one. And actually, the superintendent himself is going to be also a part of that team in every school. So it's really, um, an exciting time. All of us see the need for it and, um, we're just happy. It's a part of general academics and I think it's something that our, our, we need that cohesiveness amongst our buildings. So Amy, do you want to share what you?
Yeah, so after this year, we tried edgenuity for SEL. It did not really go the way that it was sold to me as it was supposed to go. I did a lot of work behind the scenes rewriting the program. Still wasn't exactly what we wanted. So looking at different programs, Kristin Miller and I looked at the program Mind Up. If you're not familiar with it, it's the program, um, with Goldie Hawn, that really talks a lot about regulating your emotion and focusing your attention in different ways to reduce aggressive actions and really encourage pro-social behaviors. It's an amazing program. I've been looking into it a lot and really excited. So the first step for that next year, um, is to train our staff in how they're going, cause it's more of a teacher-driven program, not an online program, which is something I think that we need. So to train our staff in how to first get their buy-in, train them how to implement the program, build it, it's gonna be built into the schedule, but it probably won't start right away because we have to train our staff and make sure that they're ready to go, because it won't be effective if they're not on board and they're not trained. Um, so that's where we're going with our piece. It's a little different than elementary, but this is more, um, in tune to our grade level and our, our students that we have. So, um, pretty excited about it. If you check out the website, there's a lot of information about it, but it's pretty, it's a pretty cool program. So that's our piece. That's different from the district, from the other schools. That's our piece. That's different in that, in that space.
I have a follow-up question, if I may. So do you have the common language in place yet, or that's something you're gonna design over the summer?
That's part of our task force. That's part of that initiative. That's part of the work that we're going to be doing. We have some ideas. Cause it's a culture change. It's gonna take a little time, but we're gonna put the work in to do it.
And the only piece I would add is, we wouldn't, like, we wouldn't want to take away something that, like, my school values morning meetings. It's a part, like, of the responsive classroom-esque and we wouldn't take things away that people are better. We just want to create that language that may fit into that as well. So use that time so that you're still doing those pieces, cause I mean, it's important and that, you don't want to take away something that is valued. You just want to make sure we're all doing it similarly and with a similar goal in mind.
Yeah, and I think there are some, certainly some best practices throughout the district that are, you know, you don't want to get rid of. I, one, another question I have is why five years? Where'd you get that plan? Did you speak as an admin team? And, and what are the steps in that five-year plan? Have, have they been structured and can they be shared?
Yeah, I think that at this point, it's that, it, we feel like it's going to take that long for our kids to transfer those skills. So that if we use a particular acronym, I came from a PBIS school system, so it took, it takes that long to get that full teacher buy-in and to get everyone to understand. And like you said, it's the common language. So that if I'm in any building and I have that privilege, then if I see something going on, I can then say, wow, you know, can you remind me again of what it's like to show respect in the hallway because I'm confused by your behavior? And then the kids can then, you know, that will be common language. If I was to do that now in the high school, they would think I was like out of my mind. But if they, they are kids that have already been through Amy's school and been through this process, they're getting it at their school, so then everybody has these things. And this is where they're posted in the hallways and I remember years ago painting signs that went across my elementary school, that we had these expectations posted up in these pieces. I think it will just take the time so that five years out, our vision is that it's up, running and then supporting itself is really that, that space.
Yeah, I don't think we're saying it's not going to be up and running within a year or two and, and, but I think to see the effects of it is gonna trickle over years. You're not gonna see that overnight, because it's hard to change cultures, especially in the high school.
They support us for three years, the state, a lot of support, which would be great.
Um, so I have a question. Um, I think it's page four of everybody's, um, plan.
Wait, could you just, do you mind hanging on? We're still on, uh, we're still on goal one.
Oh.
Is that the third goal?
Well.
I know what you're saying. Yeah, I know why you're thinking it though.
And I'm thinking it because of the bottom here where it says common language.
Yes.
So it made me look ahead.
I just want to kind of just, I just focus on each goal. So I do have a couple of questions. So I'm a little confused. It sounds like in the goal, you want to develop a PBS-style acronym.
Yes.
So we don't want to implement PBIS.
No.
And to, to Rob's point, I was in Worcester at the time too, when PBIS was the, the latest and greatest thing. And at that point, I was running alternative school. And what I looked at was taking pieces of it. So really identifying those essentials, right? And then creating a rubric, which I love, which shows kids exactly what that behavior or those expectations look like in the gym, in the hallway, on the bus, in the cafeteria. To me, that is something that you could start day one. And to Tara's point, you have a new leader coming in down here, change the culture. I think that could be done and then you build upon it as you go. Um, but I, you know, I have some old samples I can share with anybody that we used to do. But I think it's, it's, I don't want to say it's easy, but it's doable to get at least a rubric up, maybe get some posters up. You can teach the kids the first couple of weeks of school, you know, and, and then I think it's really to some of what we were hearing tonight, just the, the follow-through by teachers, holding kids accountable and, and understanding really that we, you know, the days of teaching ninety-five percent curriculum and five percent behavior management, that is shifted, right? So we really have to teach behavior and just really being able to point to a student that's running in the hall and say, hey, come here for a sec. What does it say about running? And you can have them read it to you if you're right by a rubric out in the hall or in the classroom. And then obviously it takes the, you know, the progressive discipline from there, whatever we have in place. But I think it's doable, the pieces of it. So it sounds like you're just gonna pick the, kind of the overarching essentials that we have to have, right?
These are no-brainers that we.
Right.
To teach them and.
You know, respect, safety, whatever those four, three or four themes are. And then what do those four themes look like in those common areas, right? The bus, the, the classroom. I, I think that's great and I, I love the fact about doing it, you know, K to eight and beyond, right? And, uh, I think you could start right away. I'm, I'm glad that we talked about, cause I was looking at that timeline, twenty-two to twenty-five. And I know it's, it's sustainable, but I'm hoping that the, at least that common language can be up to start the year and, and then roll, so.
Yeah, and, and you want the student buy-in as well. So we love, I mean, if you've been in PBIS school, you know, you get your kids together that first week and you ask them. You know, like Rob said during morning meeting, what should I do when I'm in the bathroom? What's appropriate behavior when I'm in there? And then we all agree to three common pieces. But then it happens at Barton and then the same thing we see at OMS and then the same thing we see in the high school. Um, again, we see that there's not appropriate behavior in any of our schools in the bathrooms, right? But that's a part of being kids. But unless we've taught those expectations, like Dave said, it's a little different now. You know, I started teaching way back in the nineties when we didn't really teach behavior, which has had this expectation. And now there's a change. There's a shift in culture and we need to be very specific with exactly what we're looking for and how, you know, how do we show integrity in the bathroom? How do we show respect in the bathroom? All these pieces. And once we get our acronym and our, and our key attributes of what we want every child in Oxford schools, those key attributes as a part of them, that, that will then follow them. But we, we are looking forward to it. We're really excited about the work. Um, this was something that was like a quick and easy and people were like, absolutely, we need to get on this. And so if you look at the additional action steps, it does talk about principals holding those monthly meetings with the whole grade level come down. And, you know, at the younger grade levels, you read a book about one of those attributes. At the older levels, they do activities that go along with that. Um, there's all different aspects. We talk about, uh, you know, our staff PD meetings that we leveraged this year. We have three set aside specifically to work on pieces like this or, um, just to make sure that everybody's aware, everybody's on board. But like Dave said, some of the stuff we can brainstorm ahead of time, have the posters made, even though the kids will be brainstorming that work. Um, then the next time they go in the bathroom, voila, our poster's already up and hanging. Like, wow, look at, look at you guys do, this is amazing.
The matrix already designed in my head and it wasn't, just, but now it seems like we're falling further and further away. We need to get back to that matrix.
All right, any other questions or comments on goal one?
I, so I, I keep hearing like, you know, half-stuff and I think the most important thing to get the kids to really buy in is that the kids have to be the ones that.
Generate.
Generate. It's not them necess- us telling them that, I keep hearing, respect, we want respect, we want respect. The kids have to feel that respect first to give that respect. And I think the best way to do it is to have class norms developed and everybody to work together as a team. And every class is different, every environment is different, and I think they need to learn that too. So, um, there was an interesting quote that I just came upon looking here and I think it's very pertinent. The goal of positive behavior support is not the perfect children. Rather, the goal should be creating the perfect environment for enhancing their growth.
Absolutely.
And I think, you know, all of our kids come differently with lots going on right now. So.
Agreed.
It's great to see this though happening finally for Oxford Public Schools across the board.
All right, thank you. Goal two?
Um, so the second goal is, the district goal was to support teachers in improving their classroom effectiveness by focus on analysis and application of student data to improve outcomes for students. So we, we all know that, that we need to get better with data. We've talked about this at the curriculum meetings. So the school goal is to create a learning environment that provides high-quality instruction to all learners and supports staff in developing shared understanding of standards and data and its impact on learning. So the action steps are slightly different in each building because we have different staff and different availabilities. So for example, in mine, it talks about iStation, MACE, HMH benchmark test, STMAP minutes data and vision benchmark testing, because that's the data that we have to track. Whereas in the elementary schools, they have listed the data that they use, which might be slightly different than what we would use at OMS. My second, the second action step utilizes interventionists and Title I support because we don't have the coaches like they do at elementary. We're utilizing different staff. So it's the same basic idea to help our teachers analyze the data and create appropriate intervention groups. And also if it, it continues down, that administration and interventionists will meet with staff to address staff about current data and its implications at least twice a year. And also just work with teachers on how to analyze their own data. So when those S R positions, some of those positions go away with S R, they can continue this work on their own. And I know we talked about that at the curriculum, um, meeting as well. And implement instructional practices and opportunities for students to engage and develop skills and knowledge at all levels of learning. That is a goal I added to mine, um, after meeting with my school council. So we talked about developing higher-level math opportunities, which we are doing. Um, so that's almost like a work in progress. Surveying students for interest in all areas, whether academic or extracurricular, and to levy opportunities in the schedule to target students' interests. That's something that Tara and I are gonna work on this summer, um, to leverage, uh, more space to offer more opportunities for the kids. So. I don't, you want to jump in on yours?
Very similar, um, different, we, like, we, we sent in both the Barton and Chafee ones. We, we utilize our Title I supports as coaches. We felt that that model was most effective for us. Um, and again, and you'll see, as we go down to the next one with the families, there's a, it's a goal that's written to work with that to make sure families are also engaged in that. So it's, it's kind of an added piece that's gonna come down.
Questions or comments for goal two? Yes, Mrs. Griffin?
So I see that families is coming up and maybe it's there, but I'm, I'm interested in knowing how, and it's probably coming, so maybe I'm, it's.
It's coming.
I want to know how frequently that data's being shared. I think I've said, yeah, dropping the gun, like, I'll be over here.
Mrs. Forbes?
Um, so a quick question. And Amy, on your plan, the surveying students of interest in all areas, because I'm the chairman of the DEI subcommittee, we've been having discussions about that. Is that?
Because I'm the chairman of the D E I subcommittee, we've been having discussions about that. Is that something that's done in all of your classrooms, by all of your teachers, for every student at the beginning of the year?
No, but it needs to be.
Okay, so it's not?
Yep, that's part of this goal.
Awesome. It's part of the D E I.
I've been working with some kids on, on that stuff too lately. They've been in my office doing some stuff, so. Um, yeah, that is part of that goal. That's one of the things I want to do.
Alright, thank you so much.
And if I can, if I may, I've seen some amazing stuff recently where, um, not necessarily here, but in other places, guidance departments reaching out and doing surveys at the beginning of the year for students. And students being able to kind of advocate in an anonymous way, but in a way too where they know they're going to be able to be reached back to and connected to. So a little survey goes out from guidance in all schools, and it's a way for kids to basically say, you know, I would like to come for a certain thing. I'd like to come for a lunch group, or I'd like to come for, um, this type of a support, or just to make a connection. So every kid knows that they're cared for, um, and you can do like a preen, pre, you know. We can be ahead of the, the curve instead of being react, reactive. We're kind of on top of it. I'd love to see that.
Yeah, and a lot of this work is really around ac, sorry, a lot of it's around academics. So if a child's like, I love math and I love reading, okay, awesome. So all the kids that said, we love math.
Right.
We're going to put you in this like special program called Continental Math, and you're going to get to like soar and enjoy.
Right.
For all our kids that checked off, I love reading. I love reading fiction. Great, we'll put together that fiction reading group. And Amy has a beautiful process. She has that win group, and we do have some kids in there that, that is what they need. They need above-grade level work.
Absolutely.
And they want to be a part of that. So instead of making them feel as though, um, you know, oh, you're kind of weird because you like math, let's put everyone together who said, I love math. I've been hearing a lot from parents about math, like, my child loves math, and they're excited about the seventh and eighth grade opportunity, and so I think the same thing will happen for, is definitely during fifth and sixth grade win blocks. So we're actually excited. It's more of an interest survey. Yeah, I hear what you're saying to the guidance aspect. We are working, we do an S E L piece as well. But this is really like, what am I interested in at school that my teachers can now support, and I get to be a part of that? And then I look forward to my win block, um, because I know I'm going to work with my math buddies, and we're going to be doing challenging activities.
So maybe my comment goes back more to goal one for social emotional health, just to make sure they're available for learning so they can do all that cool stuff that you were just speaking to.
And we do send out an S E L survey from the guidance that they look at the data and they go through that and they adjust based on that. They're sending out their last one this week, so this is, they've done it, this will be the fourth time.
This year?
Mm-hmm.
Well, that's fantastic to hear. And does that happen in every school, or is that?
I believe.
Ours is different. We have the counselors have to verbally sit with each student.
Yeah.
That's outstanding to hear, because I, I think that's the first I have ever heard that being done.
High school and. I think we talked about it earlier in the year that we were going to initiate that when we talked about the S E L program. So we put together, we put that together to collect data about S E L throughout the year, so they've been doing that and collating that data.
So we, can we see that collated data?
Yeah, it's actually going to be in the superintendent's entry findings. So we have that coming your way.
Tara and I reviewed that the other day.
Yes. And then it will go out, it'll actually go out to staff tomorrow for a staff meeting, which I forgot to send to the principals. But I have it as an update so that they can then share with their staff to say, here's how, what students reported from beginning of the year to middle of the year to end of year.
So has it been used though? Since you've done it four times, didn't you have action plans and responses to each of those?
The, around the guidance counselor, oh, sorry, guidance counselors in my building used that data and then sat with us, and we talked about things that we need to adjust or, or move around or areas we needed to target. Um, we use the Bright program for that as well, so.
That'd be great to see that. I can't wait. Thank you.
It's really cool. I think you're, I think you're going to be, it's pretty impressive. And we had broken it up by three different categories, growth mindset, uh, feelings about self, and then feelings about safety. And so it was really, really great for us to see, like, we could see, not to like totally spoil it, but at the elementary levels, they get growth mindset as a part of their mindfulness class, and you can see those numbers are off the chart. And then the areas, there's a couple of areas that come up that were kind of strange, and I thought, that's a little odd. And then I realized, you know why? Like, we don't talk about this. We don't talk about these topics. And so that then clues us in, so then when Amy's saying, my ingenuity's not working, and then we see her scores dropping, and then she reworked ingenuity and was like, tried to put it back into place, and then was like, forget it, and then started to do research on other pieces to say, we, we just need a tool that, if this one isn't working. So, um, met with a Mind Up rep, met with other people as well, and so that's where that data drives us to, like you said, we don't have tools that are working. And so now we know that from our data, and that then can support Amy and, uh, special ed services to get that up and running.
Well, I applaud you for looking at data and using it. That's awesome.
Yeah, we're excited about it.
Thank you.
Yep.
Eddie, I, just a couple of questions on, I should ask as the beginning, the district goals, uh, to the superintendent. Are these, I, I know you're going to be presenting a, an improvement plan or an updated school impro, uh, district improvement plan?
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to present my entry findings to you guys in July, and then the next thing we have to do is create a new district improvement plan as, as a team.
I mean, I'm assuming these will align somewhat.
Yes, yes.
Yes, very similar, yeah.
So a cou- couple of questions. I, I mean, I love, I, I love the fact that, you know, we have interventionists right now. I, I caution us to not rely on them as much as I feel like sometimes we may be doing it, and that's just from, from afar. You know, really, I think, looking at our tier-one instruction and how can we improve it there? Because that's really what we want kids, we want them in that tier-one instruction. Um, and it's great to hear that, you know, the self-reflection or the self-reflective practice, I mean, that's a big piece of standard too, right? That we all, so maybe that's something we can look at, is really just reflecting on all lessons, uh, any data we're getting and be able to make those, I know it talks about, you know, teaching kid, uh, coaching teachers up to analyze the data. And, and I agree, that still has, that's ongoing work, but it certainly should be happening now. You know, I mean, I know people, some are experts at it, some, some need help, but that really for me is a focus in, in, in my own building, is to really be able to make sure that we are taking that data and that we're analyzing it, and that we're adjusting practice at that tier level, because we don't have interventionists. We don't have Title One. Like, we are, we have to make it work in that tier one, so. I, again, I'm not saying the work that's happening isn't good. I just don't want to rely too much on interventionist or Title One support. Really needs, that focus needs to be in the, in the, in the classroom. Just wanted to share that. Any other que, questions on goal two?
I, I just echo your sentiments, and I feel, I mean, it would be great for our teachers, and maybe they've had this training, but the, and, you know, tier one, tier two, tier three, and what that is, and what the percentages should be for students' performance in there, and having them really see where their students fall and owning it. I, I think that's huge.
Can I just ask for clarification, then? Uh, maybe I'm, I don't know if I'm misreading it, but what I'm seeing is your interventionists, any of these plans are coming alongside, you're teaching staff to review data and to develop plans and to talk about.
And to help them, so that when they're not there, the teachers can continue that work. Because I think we have some teachers that are great at data, and I think we have some teachers that need some help, and we have a lot of new curriculum and a lot of new tests and benchmarks. So getting everybody on the same page with looking at that data and using it effectively is kind of where we're going, and that'll help us with the tier-one instruction.
So the teachers have a part in all that data review and have ownership of it?
Mm-hmm. So I, just for clarification, how many interventionists will there be in each building next year?
At Shafie, there is going to be three. There'll be two full-time Title One and one, uh, second year. This is the second year of E S R reading specialist. So one Title One will be reading, the reading specialist will finish out her second year as reading specialist, and then there'll be a Title One that's going to be assigned as a math role. At Barton, we have three, but it is a unique situation. We have a Title One teacher that is a full-time reading person. We have a two-year E S R hire. She's in her sec, coming up to her second year of being a reading specialist. And the third one is, is that we actually had a classroom teacher that's going to bump out of the classroom. Um, we would have, normally have had eight fourth-grade classrooms. Um, and so next year, the eighth, the fourth-grade team has decided to go down to seven, and they're going to pull a teacher out, a master math teacher out, and she's going to be the math interventionist that works in the building. So technically, next year, every building has three, although we are strategically using our staff in a way that works best. And like Dave mentioned, it's really not, it can't be full reliance. We're talking about one year because after next year, three of those six go away, um, in terms of E S R money and in terms of our fourth-grade teacher will go back to the classroom because numbers then increase. So it, we, we just had a great opportunity in where we figured this is the second year of Desi's accelerated plan. We may as well get the most bang for our buck that we can with the E S R hires that we have left. Sorry.
I was just going to say, for the middle school, what do we have?
The middle school, we have three E S R-funded Title One, um, not Title One, math interventionists. I have to fill one of the positions because, um, one of ours, she unfortunately had a health issue and had to leave halfway through the year, so we're still looking for her replacement, but ideally three, and then also a Title One math position. So we would have one interventionist for math for each grade level. Um, and we have a Title One reading teacher, and then I also have an E S R reading specialist who was a one-year position, but she's going to transition into our Bright room next year and be our Bright teacher, but also pick up some reading as well. So we're not a hundred percent losing her, but she'll, she'll be in a different role. And those are our interventionists, yeah, that's where we're at. So we have two reading next year and four math. And we lost our T A's unfortunately for E S R this year, so we did lose those three positions, but.
So I, personally, I would advocate that like, if there's a plan where all these interventionists are meeting with students, I'd love to see how much time per student and like how that has worked out per students. If there's, you know, certain requirements, I know we're a whole Title One district, so I would assume that everybody has the accessibility to these individuals. But I would wonder what their schedule has to be, so each child gets serviced equitably.
They do a lot more push in than they do pull out, so they work a lot in the classroom as well.
It would be great to see that, though, on paper, like, these are the teachers, this is the schedule of the Title One person, this is where they are, so it's accountable, so we know everybody's getting equitable education. I know it's a lot to ask for.
Well, I just think it changes like every time the data changes, so.
And I, and I get that it might change when data fluctuates, I get that. But at the same time, I don't know if it's really the Title One person that should be changing so much, or if it's the teachers with their tiered instruction, and I could be wrong. This could be another discussion for a further time. But there's a part of me that I feel like consistent structure and plans and details, it's something that I am strongly desiring to see because I just don't feel with all honesty that I saw or understood how all those funds were being used this year. So I'm really looking for accountability.
Absolutely.
Like, to the nth degree, where I really want to understand where those people are and how much time they spend with students and how much time they spend with teachers. And if, I kind of see them more as they're to help our students more than they're to help our teachers get the data. I think the teachers understanding the data, that might need to come from administration, but that's just my impression. I could be wrong.
They don't work with teachers during the day on, on data. They're in classrooms and they're pulling kids and they're doing that. So when the teachers are having common planning time, they're pulling kids out of their win block and adjusting instruction. So that other work comes in our department meetings.
Okay.
And, and our after-school meetings, not something that they're doing in the middle of the day. They're in classrooms every period, almost every day. Some of them forego even their prep period to pull kids for instruction. So they're, they're doing the work with the kids when they're in the building.
It's easy enough to get you the schedule, because we certainly have the schedules from, from all three schools.
That would be, that would be awesome.
Absolutely.
Just so I can understand. I think it would help all of us understand it and then be able to also advocate for why we're doing it.
Absolutely.
Alright, goal three.
You can't read that while my class is on, so. Okay, goal three, engage families in two-way communication about student progress programs and performance. I, I have to say, one thing we did this year, and I believe it was on a Tuesday P D day, um, teachers wrote postcards home. Inspirational, great job. That was huge. That went over unbelievable. So obviously some superficial things. We want to keep doing those things, uh, the positive call home, great communication. You know, I still do the good news call of the day, and no matter who I call, it's, why are you calling me? Who's in trouble? Who got hurt? Like, it, it's just, you, you, no matter how many times you do it, you want to try it, and, and anytime you can reach home, whether it's about data or behavior or anything, that, that is positive. And you can see at the bottom of the goal, uh, we have a couple of things we want to work on, and then I know that the school committee is near and dear to your heart, uh, about implementing and training parents with the new Power School add-on, unified insights that people can get in there and, and look at the data and, um, make sure families are looking in Power School certainly at least three times a year. Well, you know, for Rob and I, um, specifically with benchmarks in September, uh, January, and May. And, um, Amy's is just a touch different, right? Amy, you had, you know, I know it's three times a year, but you had a different, do you have a different program? Was I spot on? Okay, well, that was good, so I, uh, but that's, that's, that sort of, you know, that's the goal in a nutshell.
Questions, comments? So, just real quick, so Unified Insights, can you tell me where this at?
That is that, that Power School add-on. So we are looking at, um, housing all of our data in one location. So, uh, there's different, we reach out to different schools in the area, ask them how they unify all of their data. And a lot of people were using whatever their main system, if they use a Schoology or they use Aspen. So we actually have Power School, so Katie and reached out and asked for a quote and a video of information about, basically what will happen is, is when a parent now logs into Power School, next year there'll be an assessment tab. They'll be able to click on that tab, and then it will have all the child's assessment data, so all their benchmark testing from September. And then our plan is to send out, um, timed emails that'll say, okay, all benchmark testing has now been completed. Please check your child's Power School account to see their latest, yeah, benchmark score.
Yeah, so we have that, it's called Quick Test Scores, so I can click on it, and it shows me every kid's M C A S score, but it just gives you the score.
Yeah, so we talked about this as well with, um, what's it called? Unified Insights. They're, again, they're an add-on company to Power School, so Power School has been kind of absorbing other companies that do these pieces and then incorporating them into that system. So we talked about that, and the great part that we liked about the Unified Insights is that we can then add that information ourselves. So then we, what we could do is a parent could then click on the child's score, and it will say, average range is, so that the child, the parent would know.
Oh, so it actually can highlight it?
Yes, and we, we've also talked about the idea of possibly setting it up where it's color-coded so that a parent could say, you know, if you see like greens across the board or like greens and blues, that you would then, there'd be a color code that would let a parent know um, what these scores represent, because of course, same thing happens with M C A S scores. Like, it's great to see a five thirty-six. If you don't know what that means, it doesn't help you at all. So those are the little pieces that we thought would be great. And then it also can incorporate our benchmark data from our program, so our Envision's math can be loaded in there. Our H M H program can be loaded in, M C A S scores, iStation, Dibbles, everything can go in. And that's also beautiful for our teachers as well, because now they can click on the child and see all of their scores. And of course, I like the idea that you can see past work as well. So once this gets loaded in, it's actually going to be really amazing so that parents and teachers can access it. Right now, we have to go into each program separately. You got to go into Dibbles to see the Dibble score. You have to go into iStation. So it's a lot of training for our teachers, um, to learn each program and then how to access each one. So we figured this would be a way to unify all the data and just make it easier. When we have a data meeting at the table, now we can just pull up a kiddo, and now we can see everything. So when a, a P L C is working together and S E L P L C is working together, we can then see what's going on with the whole child, which will make our life a little bit easier, and then parents have access at any time they need to get in there, uh, which will also be nice.
Oh, that's great. I mean, if you can click on the score and see the actual report, that's, that's really good. I, I think, just speaking for a few of us on the committee, I think, you know, one of the concerns with the communication piece, which I think is next, and maybe you guys touch upon it, or no, we're on it right now.
We're on it, yeah.
Is really engaging that tier-two and tier-three student, right, that struggling learner? Because it, we can't, unfortunately, we can't assume that people are going to click on these reports and know where their child is at. So that's really that, whatever we call it, a success plan or an intervention plan, that we are really targeting. And, and, you know, I, I hate to say to leave the higher achiever out, but we really need to target the, the struggling learner to make sure that we've engaged the parent in this conversation and make them a partner in the, in the plan.
Yeah.
That's a huge piece, and I think that's the piece that, you know, a few of us talk about a lot. That's, that's the work that all of us, right, all of us in administration do every day in trying to figure out what, how can we make this plan, uh, successful, and what can we, how do we engage the parent?
Yeah, and we had, we had our teachers pull data for our top math students, same thing. We were looking for, what's their fifth-grade score? What's their this, what's their that? So then teachers had to go through and then find each one of those, put that, put that data into place. And then we added in our additional benchmark, our placement testing to go into that space as well. So this will now be so much faster and easier. We'll be able to quickly see who are our top math students and then get that idea of like, okay, this is where, these are who we predict are going to do well and move on to this next space. These are who we're looking at. Okay, these, this group is in the yellow. How can we really help this group move forward? So I think, yeah, it, it will be a faster, better system that creates, uh, better communication. And we, but we also know at the K to four level, there's a lot of parent-teacher communication consistently across the board. So we, you know, we're hoping that this is another avenue for parents, uh, suggested by Ms. Griffin, to say that it will be easier if parents can access it at any time they need it. And there's sometimes you go to the doctor office and they're asking for these scores, or it's information that parents need if they're having, you know, outside evaluations done. Now that parents can access it very quickly, and I think that's, it is an important tool for parents.
No, it is, a- absolutely, but again, I think it's, we, we can lead people to it, but we really have to support those, um, that are struggling.
Can I just, I know you, I just, if we're not careful on how we do that, what we're fearing is that a parent will look at a score and just, we see this after a parent conference, we just get these, oh, these got to be referred to special ed. That's not always the case, and what we need to do is inform the parent, these are the interventions that we're doing, these are what we have in place right now. If we don't see certain changes, of course, we're going to be concerned, but, um, the fear would be just to put these out without any information and then.
Well, right, I mean, we have to educate the, the parents in the community on what, what is, what is going to be accessible in Power School. But again, when you peel through that, we really need to be having direct conversations with the parents and saying, here's what we're seeing. Here's been the trend the last couple of years. We feel as a team, if we implement A, B and C with your support at home, we feel like we're going to progress monitor this for four weeks, six weeks, and see where we're at. You know, obviously, if a parent decides to initiate an evaluation, there's nothing we can do. But we want to, if, I think if we start to dialogue, create those relationships and be able to map out a plan, I think people will work with us without going that route. So I hope, I, I know you just said the word, I, I don't want to have fear be the word. I mean, I, I want to be able to, I, for me, as a principal, I want to be able to engage with the parent and have that conversation and lay out a plan. And, and then, you know, after we, you know, after we do some progress monitoring, see where we're at, then maybe we decide as a team that we, we should do an evaluation. But I, I love the fact that we're going to get, in fact, I'm going to email our people after and ask about Unified Insights. Because I, if we can click on and see the scores right there, the actual report, that's a game changer for me. Because I'm looking right now, I pulled it up, I can see this student's MCAS scores all the way from third grade up and then our STAR assessment scores, so it gives me just that quick raw data. But if I, if we could click on something and see the whole report without me having to go into STAR and get it, that's great.
Right, that's what we're trying to avoid, having to go into different systems to get the information. We're looking for a one-stop shopping.
What's the, no, I'll, I'll.
We'll talk about that last.
We're still finalizing our work.
But I have thoughts. And I have thoughts about that too, like, I know there's that wonderful program, but there's also wonderful programs that are bigger, right? Like Canvas and Schoology, like you were talking about. And it would, it would take effort on the teacher's part, but results can be scanned and they can be uploaded as PDFs, and parents can access them that way too. And then you have more dynamic stuff, where parents can see a PDF of every assignment that's assigned every day, that, you know, the teachers can put out their notice to families, and parents can take more initiatives. And we're actually making a child career ready or ready to go on to higher education, because I think our students can attest to this, they leave the Oxford Public Schools and some of them might not necessarily be prepared to look on one of these bigger platforms. We got to get there, we're behind, this is not, not my opinion, I think it's the opinion of many. We're behind getting our kids comfortable to that type of a platform. We really and truly need something besides just the Google suite, which everybody kind of has now, that's the norm. We need a bigger thing that can manage things for teachers, so teachers can put stuff there and kids can actually submit assignments and grade assignments online and turn them back, and things aren't lost. And that would help with, you know, academic management, it would help with transparency, it would help with parent communication because they'd see their children's work all the time. And I'm assuming like, you know, I know the teachers reach out and contact parents frequently, but I, that's got to be like, it's got to be constant, it's got to be all year. There's got to be that dialogue and that dance back and forth between the classroom and the teachers.
Yeah, I think too, with, I know that right now we just use the Google platform, and this is a little bit different because we're, we're kind of like comparing apples to oranges right now. But if, you know, looking at that space too, I'm sure that if you reached out to a teacher as a parent, you can be added to the Google classroom, and then you would see all the assignments as well.
And I think a lot of our parents are, and I think that's a commonplace for our elementary schools. And then we get to the middle school and the high school, and it's, they're more independent. And then we can see stuff in the Power School, but at the same time, you know, having a Canvas or Schoology where you can see a digital portfolio for that child all the way through again.
Yeah, I completely understand what you're saying, it is a little different, but yeah, that's something else we could talk about.
Not just scores.
Yeah, yeah, that's.
If we're making a big investment, maybe we make an investment that's just a little bit more and have much, much, much more.
All right, thank you, goal four.
The school will foster culturally responsive environment that is inclusive and creates a sense of belonging for all students. You can see the action steps, they all relate to a culturally responsive teaching for staff to identify certain areas. Integrate more culturally representative aspects into their classroom. They need to do some self-improvement, some auditing of where they're at. And we all need to take a look at our practices and make sure that as a district, we're, we're doing things appropriately, culturally responsibly. And that goal, we think encompasses that.
And it kind of ties into the PBIS thing that we were talking about, doing too, with just looking at instruction at the whole and also the culture of the building. But we did start some of this work this year with our staff, so we just want to continue it.
Is there a, a program or a, a group that's kind of informing this work? Are we using something or?
There are, we're informing the work first, we've just had us read two common books as an administrative team. And then from there, I develop a lot of the professional development for the teachers. And this is stuff that is delivered through staff meetings, so they kind of get it in these small chunks, and they don't get completely overwhelmed by, you know, the, the practices that we're talking about. It also combines with universal design for learning, so when all that kind of like smushes together, that's where that's work coming from. So we read Culturally Responsive Teaching by Zaretta Hammond, and then we read Trauma-Informed Instruction. And I do not recall the author of that text offhand. But as a team, we read both of these texts, and then we're going to go into a third text that's specifically about universal design for learning. So it's all these pieces together, and typically I designed that work based off the readings that we do as an admin team. So after we've read and discussed and we pull out the key areas we feel are important for our staff, then that work then goes into the PD, and then each principal then presents that information to their, their staff. We did, we do, we do rely on Mirko Scharden, he wrote a book about equity within schools. And so he came and he spoke to the administrative team, but he also did, spoke on PD Day as well to come in. And that begins, that beginning conversation about implicit bias and about, you know, how and why these biases might come about within our classroom that we don't realize. And so we, we've been doing the work at top so that we can then pull what's important for our system and then present that professional development that way. But for the most part, it's in-house designed by us.
Just a follow-up, because I don't, I don't see it in the plan, but I think in conversations I've had with, with somebody who I know it's there. So I don't know if it just needs to be somehow included, but where are the students in this process, right? So how are they being brought alongside to say, how, how do you feel a sense of belonging in our schools? Like I said, I know you're doing it, but.
Yeah, so that comes with the SEL data that we collected this year as a part of Sense of Self, which was our second set of questions that, I can picture it in my mind, so, but when, when you see it, you'll, you'll be able to see. So that was the next piece, so we really felt, if you look at this one, the district goal that's attached to it will be a new district goal as well. So this was something that we felt was really important, that we did not have in our past district improvement plan. So we had went, we went a little rogue on this and kind of like preempted a bit, because as we looked at the district improvement plan, we realized that we really need this piece as well. So the sense of belonging piece, we are looking to bring more to the students, again, through that PBIS piece, through, you know, having this common language, and then through helping the teachers with that practice and then talking to the students about it. So there, you're right, there are pieces there. This year was focusing on admin to get it out to staff, and then staff now to get it out to kids and have these specific conversations. But I also don't think our staff is a hundred percent there yet to bring it out to kids. So there still needs to be a lot of work done in that area, which is why I think we should focus on them in the plan to start. But the kid piece will, will come. I'm not sure that we're at that space, other than with the work that we're doing with the kids through the PBIS and other things that we do as admin with them.
Yeah, I think that actually answers my question, I think tied into your other goal, you are, you are getting information from the kids. You are soliciting their thoughts and their feelings about, do they feel like they have a sense of belonging in their school? So I think, yeah, that, just a sense, just struck me as maybe that could be indicated here, even if it's just a copy and paste of a step in one of the other goals, just to say that the kids are a part of this process, right?
Yep, Mrs. Forbes.
All right, and you do all have page four, just saying.
We got the.
So DEI Subcommittee is just going to throw a couple of things out here, and I know Tara sits on that Subcommittee, as does Mr. Lavelle from the middle school. But a few things that have come up over this school year, and this being the first year of the committee. The common language that was mentioned in goal one. DEI Committee has a common language dictionary. If we could share that with everybody and that could be a part of the common language, that would be amazing, because this needs to be district-wide. Maybe not elementary at this point, we're starting at the top and working our way down. Mrs. Griffin, back to one of the things that you had talked about in the teachers surveying, the parents surveying the students who are getting some of their interests and that kind of thing. Another thing that we've been discussing there as well, we want to stay away from scripted, and we're trying to allow some freedom for the teachers to gather information. And our committee does have students, and our committee has teachers. And one of the things we just talked about on Wednesday night was that students choose who they tell what to. So they have their trusted adults, and that's not something that I feel the guidance department is probably going to be that trusted adult for most of the students here, they have a teacher, someone that they trust, that they know, that they feel comfortable with, know that they have commonalities with. So I think that's really something that I would like to see in the classroom level as opposed to at guidance. And it does include interests and all kinds of individual information. They need to have some of their own anonymity as teachers, and it's because of their comfortable, the way, how comfortable they are with different subjects. But the one thing I really want to take a good hard look at, and it fits right into the social emotional when we're looking at the posters, that was brought up at DEI right in the beginning. So I walked around, I was like, oh, geez, ooh, we're not doing so great in that area. So hopefully over this year, those things have changed, things have been, you know, put into place that do represent everybody here. But we really need to take a look at the stuff that we're doing that is specifically non-inclusive. Because we have some of that and we need to work on that, because no one's ever going to feel included and feel a part of the process in their own education if they know, well, I can't join that club, or I can't be a part of that group for whatever reason. And these are things that we have heard from students as well as staff. So the common language, if we could be included in that, it'd be great. Like I said, not so much at elementary, but in the upper grades.
We at the middle school did share that dictionary when we did the responsive teaching piece earlier in the year.
Awesome, thank you, good to hear.
And we did give that to them, so I don't know, I can't speak for every school, but I know that we have.
Yeah, I know, I think.
But I think it's done a lot of work with that being.
Awesome.
And, um, this is Forbes to piggyback off of your statement, I know you're talking about having an accelerated math program. Again, those types of courses by law have to be kind of like out there and available to all students. So if a parent wanted to override, they'd have to be allowed to place into a class like that. And I think we have to be transparent in that, that all opportunities are available to students. We might have this class that is available for these students that are accelerated, but we also have to make it inclusive. And if a student wants to take it, we have to be able to make it and help them so they can also participate in that. But I do like the idea that we're ratcheting up our expectations for our students. And I think that's something that has to happen across the board, again, with that tiered instruction ultimately.
Just real quick, September, and I, I apologize if you had did this, but I believe, I remember the previous meeting asking if you could share that, the definition of terms with the committee? I'm just checking my email.
Did ask, and I didn't ever send it.
You may have sent it?
No, I did not.
Okay, if you don't mind, that'd be great.
Nope, I don't think I can do it from here, but I will back in the morning.
Yeah, but it would be great for us to also.
Thank you.
You've got it, thanks for the reminder.
And Mrs. Forbes too, if I may, through the chair, to kind of go back to the other comment about, you know, I don't know, like, when we put the surveys out, they, ultimately, it's kind of got to go somewhere, so somebody aggregates that data and looks at it. But if students aren't necessarily participating, that gives us a pulse too, and an understanding of what's going on as well. So I think sometimes you just got to start somewhere, so you can go, you know what I mean? And you're right, they, that might not be their trusted adult, but I think.
No, point being, they already do that, at least at the high school level, we've talked a lot about that. There are different teachers, and maybe everyone doesn't, I'm looking for everyone to do it. And it's a get-to-know-me kind of thing. So there's something that they will say in Mrs. Griffin's class, that they won't say in Mrs. Forbes' class, because they don't want me to know. And they're okay with you knowing because they feel.
I got you.
That's what I'm saying, anything, whether it be their personal life, whether that be academic struggles, social emotional, you know, whatever it is. So it's more that kind of thing, and just trying to be sure that every student has the opportunity to.
And has a connection to an adult in the building.
We can't make those connections, but hopefully the students and teachers together make those connections, and I think that happens. And that's why guidance is maybe not our best.
And I think Mr. Quinn could speak to this, I'm going to put him on the spot, but back, yeah, yeah, I'm going to make you go way back to other previous work and other previous places. But there was a wonderful practice that, I know I took part in, and I think it probably even made it back to one of your previous work assignments. But we used to do this thing called the DOT activity, where we would look at all of our students and make sure that each child has a connection, and this was from a, a national study in a best practice. You can look it up and, and find it if you research it. But what was discovered that if you looked at all your students, and you basically asked your whole faculty to look at all of them, and just gave each teacher a sticker, a sheet of stickers, and it was very anonymous. But we went around with all the kids' names, and it was if you have a personal connection with that child, that's a little bit more than, you know, hey, how you doing in the morning, but you like, you know about their family or you know about their interest, or you know about something, you would put a sticker. And we would look ultimately, and we'd stand back, and we would say, wow, look at all those kids that have all these connections. Look at all these kids that don't, those are all of our at-risk students. And that's what we need to do, we need to do a DOT activity where we're like, we're really stepping back. It's a really simple activity for each building, but you'll quickly see who are the kids that are greatest at risk, because there is no dots next to their names, there are no personal connections. And you really want them to be connections where like, they really feel valued. And ultimately, you know, again, a best practice, but teachers would say, hey, I have that kid, I see that kid two, three times a day, or I see that kid, I'm going to make sure that I reach out to that kid, or I'm going to try to have that relationship. And it made such a huge difference in my professional practice, and I think it would make great differences here, so just to bring that.
Uh, just real quick, so in the school I work in, we use Panorama, I think I mentioned that last time. So sense of belonging every year is something that we focus on, it's usually in our school improvement plan at some level. So I guess the question is, does this, the data you have, does it have sense of belonging amongst staff and then their peers?
Yes.
All right, I'm just curious, because that, there is sometimes a substantial eye-opening data for us when I see, you know, you know, the, if there's a huge distinction between that, so good, I just wanted to ask that. And the three dedicated meetings that presented by the curriculum director, can you just explain what that's going to look like?
Yeah, absolutely, so, well, this year, our staff meetings were all on the same day at the same time, which was challenging for me, because I can't be at all meetings at the, at the same day at the same time. So next year, their plan is to stagger them so that each school actually has, has a different day, which will make my life easier, so that now when my principals are out there working really hard presenting that PD, that I'm kind of like, hey, here's what we talked about, here's what's coming your way, I can be there as a support staff. So three times, we are going to specifically talk about the, the, the data and the information from this space. So we're going to dedicate the time of three staff meetings, which we leverage for PD, so that we can work together and, and do these pieces. So that is, that's our plan, is that we realize that we really, if we need to make this a big forefront, the sense of belonging for our kids, it's listed specifically in Desi's Acceleration Plan, it was something we really wanted to get to this year, which we started with our data, and now that we have a year's worth of data, then next year, now we know what programs need to put into place, and then how that important language impacts teachers.
All right, any other questions?
Sounds good, I'm excited to see it.
Me too, we're super excited.
We do need a motion to approve these school improvement plans for the three schools.
I'm going to get a motion to approve the school improvement plans for all three schools.
Second.
Can I make one comment?
Yep, we have a motion and a second discussion.
So I see timelines, tentative and final outcomes, but I think I'd want a little bit more benchmarks, like where we're, in addition to the timelines, I don't, and I'm trying to, I'm, I'm going way back, but I feel like we used to on other school improvement plans have maybe a little bit more detail with a column of how things are going to be done, like when and where. So there's dates, but not necessarily like an action plan. We got timeline, final outcomes, but I wonder how, am I making sense?
Yep.
Yeah, we have, we're, we're kind of like going by the action steps underneath, and we're kind of looking at like the three kind of main hit times throughout the year, that October time, that January time, that May time is like our big, is our big piece of that. Some of the stuff, we had a hard time, we talked about it as a team, and we were struggling with when and how to benchmark these pieces. So that's going to come as a result of our two-day, July twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth.
So could we get?
We also looked at, we also looked at a lot of other areas of schools too, and noticed that benchmarks tend to be repetitive with action steps. So they tend to be the same in each column, and that not a lot of schools have the benchmark part.
So we were just looking at more efficient way to, so that we have some flexibility in our plan to adjust and make our, our goals the way that we need to map them out.
Yeah, but to, to Pal's point, like to, just for action step, goal one, develop a task force to develop common language across the school to support students and staff by September twenty-twenty, you know what I mean? Like I, I think.
Or where, or how, like how? And I wonder, were all these looked at, I'm assuming that this was also created by your school councils?
You met with our school councils, yeah.
On all of them? I just wonder how that worked, that, I mean, it's cool that everybody's in unity, but I was, I wonder, was there anything else that was brought up by school council? How frequently you met and if they?
Going when it comes to initiatives like this, we just showed them the action steps, told them where we're at and where we need to go.
So I added actions, I added action steps based on what my school council's feedback was. That's where the whole thing about implementing instructional practices, that, that all came from my school council.
Yeah, I agree with that, Amy too, if I can just interject, I was on that school council with Dave and Amy, and they drove that plan.
That's awesome.
Honestly, so that really does, I can affirm that for sure, that that is all driven by that.
That's great to hear, like that, that's how it should work. So that's, I ask those questions only because I want to make sure that these things are happening. And I want people in our community to know that we need them on those school councils. And I know you guys do a great job reaching out and soliciting people to come, but sometimes I don't think people even know that that's happening. All that hard work behind the scenes, so, thank you.
All right, so we do have a motion and a second on the floor, any more discussion?
Just, I would like to see a little more detail besides just kind of these times, like they're, they look similar. So based on Ms. Trainers, Mrs. Trainers' feedback here, she said that she couldn't necessarily meet at the same dates, at the same schools, but I'm seeing the same dates on everybody's plan, so I, that's one level of confusion I have. I don't know.
So maybe if we, if we, how could I throw a, a suggestion?
Yeah.
If we approve them tonight, maybe we can ask for a quarterly, like a report in November. I don't, I know I always, I didn't, I wasn't a fan of that back with previous chairs, but at least just to satisfy your concern.
Hopefully.
Which I agree.
Anybody else have that concern?
No, I do, I, I, I think it could be a little bit more, you know, a little bit more targeted, but I'm okay with approving it. If we can get, you know, whether through, the, the principals give a report through Tara and she comes in and reports, but maybe we just make note that we want to have it, you know, before the end of the first quarter, maybe in November meeting or end of October. Then we just get a report, kind of see where they're at, and then we can go from there. I'd be kind of okay with that, I don't want that satisfies, yes, Mr. Burke?
I think just for me, and I understand your point, Pal, looking through the actual action steps, many of them are going to be difficult to narrow down exact dates to. I, I just know from doing how many of these school improvement plans and being on school councils, that a couple of the schools, sometimes those benchmark dates are arbitrary.
Yeah, they are.
It's a lot of work for something where you go, well, we didn't meet that, and, but we're still doing it, we're getting it done, so I.
And I think.
To me, it's more about the steps that are in here and trusting that you guys are going to work on them, but.
Yeah, and I totally agree, because I've seen that years of experience myself. But I think it helps too when other people are checking in, because it helps us all be accountable. So I like your thought of checking in a few times, absolutely.
All right, so we, okay, so we have a motion, a second. If we vote to approve that, then we can have Helen Dyke, you know, put on the agenda for, you know, October, maybe the second meeting in October, the first in November, we, we get an update. Is that good?
That sounds great, thank you.
Any more discussion? Call for the vote, Ms. Cook? Mrs. Forbes?
Yes.
Mrs. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, five yes. Uh, it's like Ms. Bell Humor is up for the middle school handbook, family student handbook.
It's only a hundred and forty-one pages.
So the handbook, the highlighted changes that are in our handbook are just things that are in everybody's handbook that were not in mine. So Helen went in and graciously updated that and updated any policy changes that had come down from the policy committees. So those are the major changes in the handbook. I did, and I don't know if it's highlighted, I adjusted the locker language to make them, we're making them optional for next year, locker use is optional. And I added in grade eight where it was warranted, I added in media as a special. There's not a lot of big changes going on in there this year at all, other than that, I think we added AirPods to our.
Not allowed electronics.
The electronics policy, like just wearing them when it's appropriate and not when it's not appropriate. There was one area that I didn't get the feedback from Mrs. Gremsky in time to add before I had to give the handbook okay to Helen. So I do need to make a revision, and I would ask that hopefully you will approve it with the revision. On page thirteen, I believe, for NJHS, because we have grade eight, we need to revise that back to the original charter. We had made a motion to suspend our charter for a short period of time, why, because we didn't have grade eight. But we need to change that back to seventh grade candidates are nominated based on their grades from first and second marking periods of grade seven. And eighth grade candidates are nominated based on their grades from third and fourth marking periods of grade seven and the first and second marking periods of grade eight. So we need to revert back to our original charter that we should be working under. So that's the only change that's not in there that I need to add. But other than that, we really didn't change much, we added a lot. Again, the stuff that was in everybody's handbook on enrollment and registration, school cancellations, delayed openings, school lunch menus, it's a lot. It made it ginormous, it's a huge handbook now. Family school partnership, electronic backpack, Chromebook, Power School report cards. So all this stuff is in everybody's handbook in the district, we're trying to make them more uniform, so a lot of that district stuff is now added to ours as well. And then student services, all that was, language was updated according to the policies and things of that nature. But other than that, we didn't really change much, other than adding grade eight in, so.
Any questions regarding the handbook, yes, Mrs. Griffin?
So I know that the bullying law was updated and this might be a policy subcommittee, I just don't know. Like I know there's a form that the district has, but by law that should be available to parents, they should be aware of where to find it. It should be something that's easy for people to find.
Yep, it's on the website.
Yeah, but again, I don't know if our parents know it, I really don't think they do. And it's also something that by law administrators and teachers or other people that are observing are supposed to be putting those forms in. And we're supposed to be very, very proactive and the law is very, very strict.
So by, by the law, I believe we have to document, it doesn't necessarily mean on that form.
Correct, correct.
So, which we do, we document.
Yes, so for clarification sake, it has to be documented.
Yep.
And people need to be aware, and I also think parents might not even be aware that that's there for them. So I would like to make it, I'd like to just make it more obvious.
What's, oh, what's the suggestion, how to make that more obvious if it's on the website?
Maybe post it on our website in a way that's a little clearer. And I know it, our website is, it's not the easiest website to navigate, we're working on it, but.
Okay, but again, that's a district thing?
No, I know it's a district thing, but if that, that form could be in handbooks, so parents could see it?
On page fifty-four, there's, you know, three pages of, four pages.
Of information on bullying.
Right, no, I read it, I read through it.
All that is there, I mean, I would say.
So can you point out where it says the form is there? Because I might have missed, just not seen it, and I do apologize if that's the case. Because I don't see any information here for me as a parent to know that there is that form that's available.
But that's the district policy that's in our handbook. So that would be something that should be changed across the board, not just in mine.
Absolutely.
And I do inform my parents at our open houses at the beginning where they can find all that information. So, and I do get parent information and parents reporting through that portal.
All right, do we, it's the second, it's listed under parents, actually the top two are places where parents can get information or report as well. So they can go under anonymous alert, which specifically has a bullying section.
Right.
Or the second one for bullying. You're right, a parent's going to have to go to the website and do a little digging.
Right.
Or they would have to have been, you know, a proactive parent that's specifically at school functions to hear about the information. But it could be something too that maybe gets added to the beginning of the year, emails home either from individual teachers or principals. Just a reminder that if you're having any issues, please contact the teacher, a guidance counselor, and there are forums available online. So I think that's a nice, simple communication piece that.
It would go a long way, I think, yeah, that's all, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I have other questions about the handbook. So we do need a motion to approve, I would suggest that we make a motion to approve and say that the change to the NJHS will be made to go back to the child in the eighth grade, so that we don't have to have Ms. Bell Humor get that approved again. So if somebody wants to make that motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the handbook with the NJHS change being made ASAP.
Second it?
All right, any more discuss, any discussion? Call for the vote, Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Forbes?
Yes.
Mrs. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, handbook is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, so the Oxford High School NIASC report, I believe we have a couple of high school representatives, Mr. Nugent could not make it tonight.
Hi, good evening.
Hi, how are you?
Hi.
Good, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Good, thank you for having us.
Yeah.
Um, all of you in your package should have a letter from the New England Association of Schools and Colleges dated April twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two. What Lindsay and I would like to do is just give you a brief summary of how we got to this letter, okay? So back in the fall of two thousand and eighteen, we started the NIASC process where Lindsay and I were put in charge of being the co-chairs for the steering committee. We had numerous responsibilities that we did as far as guiding the whole process amongst the school, between surveys with parents, students, faculty, collecting numerous data to put together a pretty in-depth report. In the spring of two thousand and nineteen, we had a collaborative conference in which Oxford High School identified five priority areas. Those five priority areas were to develop a vision of the graduate that drives student learning in this school, consistent implementation of a school council, develop and implement school-wide rubrics to assess individual and whole school achievement, completion of curriculum and maps in a common format for all courses and subject areas, and continued development of interventions pertaining to mental health, behavioral, and social emotional needs. After the visit was completed, we began, we received some feedback from the visiting team, and then COVID hit. So that kind of threw a wrench in everything. Long story short, we returned back to school this year. We were able to have our decennial visit scheduled from December fifth through December eighth. And from the start of the school year until probably beginning of November, we put together that report, updated areas that we were able to update, submitted it, and the decennial visit took place. During the decennial visit on December fifth, three ma, three members of the visiting team came to the school, were able to see things in person during that day. The remainder of the visit was done remotely. Observations in classrooms, observations with students, meetings with students, faculty, guidance, parents, et cetera. After that visit, we received a draft report, we reviewed it, we submitted it back to NIASC. NIASC at that point had to put it in front of their board, and then they voted in on whether or not we receive accreditation for another ten years. And that is what the letter you have in front of you on April twenty-fifth, or dated April twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two indicates.
Yep, so within this letter, you'll see all the bullets are lists of commendations, so all positive things that came out of the visit. I think I counted, there's about fifteen different things that they highlight, highlight as great things that we're doing. And a lot of which reflects the priority areas that we identified going into the visit, such as like have developing vision of the graduate, which we did. So within their final report, they rated, so within their standards of accreditation, they have to hit on, and rate us for six of their foundational elements. We were rated as meeting five of the six. We did not meet element two-point-two A, which requires a written curriculum in a consistent format for all courses in all departments. I believe this is something that I think our school's switching from using Rubicon Atlas, that platform's using more of a Google format for that anyways. But that's something we've, I know our building has been continuously working on through, over the year. So I, I think that's an easy, easy thing to eventually fix and to meet. Within the letter, it outlines our next steps. So according to the NIASC commission, they request a first report of progress and planning by February first, two thousand twenty-three, at which time the commission will request a copy of the school's revised school improvement and growth plan. Then they will require us to submit a three-year report of progress and planning due by February first in the year two thousand twenty-five. And I know Chris and I have chatted just about our work moving forward, you know, I know it'll, with working who our next admin is coming in, whether we stay on board to help kind of steer that, so.
Absolutely.
That's about it.
Questions, comments, yes, Mr. Burke?
I just like to say that this report is great to look at, it, it makes me feel really good about the direction of our school. I think it's unfortunate sometimes that we are judged what people deem to put on Facebook and that people don't take the time to look at all the work that you guys have done and all the progress that we have made. I, I hope the community knows that we are heading in a good direction, and I commend you both for your work on this, thank you.
Thanks. Mrs. Griffin, I think I saw your hand.
Yeah, I commend you both for all your hard work too. I've read those other reports and I saw the work that had to be done. And I'm proud of the work that has been done. And I still would like to go through those reports again, and I think every committee member should get a copy of that, go through it and see what we have done. I'd love to understand, you know, from the superintendent, exactly how we're going to get that curriculum piece done, who's going to be in charge of that, how it's going to go through the district. Because it's got to obviously happen here for our high school, but it has to happen for all of our schools where that is done. And I kind of understand, want to understand that planning piece because we did kind of let go of the Atlas piece, it was a big ticketed expense. And I think our teachers could probably store their curriculum better in a more thoughtful way, they probably already are. But if it, you know, to see that unified approach through the district, what is it going to be, what are we expecting teachers, I'd love to see that.
Any other comments?
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you both very much, appreciate you coming in.
Thank you guys for coming tonight, thank you.
Bye.
Thank you, Chris. All right, moving forward, we do have a meeting minutes to review and approve of May twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two. If you have a chance to take a look at it, we do need a motion to.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from May twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two.
So we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, a call for the vote, Ms. Cook?
I, I'm sorry. So I just see like the notes about seeing new procedures in place for warrant process and then understanding like budgets and whatnot, but I don't know if it's captured in there. I remember I, I brought up a concern that I would like all of our schools to necess, to have a different process for when they're putting in their POs for their twenty-four eleven, twenty-four ten, consumable, non-consumable, kind of a streamlined process. And I don't know if that's reflected, and I think it was.
Capture on, I see it on page four.
Yeah, um.
Your comments, you would like to see some new procedures in place with respect to the warrant process?
Yeah, but it's very vague.
Uh, I mean.
It warrant process, that can mean anything, I'm not, it's not just the warrant, it's more, it's more the process for spending those funds. It's not just the warrant, it's more for, I want to purchase all these things, but before I purchase these things, I need to, you know, make a plan, talk to my building principal about it, us as a committee, like we make this pot of money, right? And agree to this portion for the budget, and it's on our administrators to kind of divvy that up. But I don't know, and I could be mistaken, but from what I've observed over the years, it seems like people come to that pot of money and they allocate things at all different ways, but it might not necessarily be as structured as it could be. And I think that we could be better stewards of our funds if we really had a plan where administrators said, okay, this, this department, I know we have, kind of, kind of have it structured out, that they have a little bit here, and this has a little bit here and a little bit here. But if it's tied a little bit more, you know, streamlined to very, very specifics for certain things. Because I see it coming through, you know, people at times saying that they want books, or people at times say they want all these other things. Granted, we've had all these grants that we are using and we're buying a lot of things that need to be, but at the same time, I think it could be more structured.
Well, I mean, I think, you know, our job is to advocate and provide a, you know, and, and push for a budget that is going to meet the needs of the district. And then I think at that point, we have to allow superintendent and his administrative team to utilize those funds.
Right.
I think that's why we get copies of those warrants, so if we have questions about what's happening through the superintendent, he would reach out to his team. So I, I kinda, I understand what you're saying, to have a protocol and a process. That's really not our purview, at least in my opinion, for us to micromanage, so to speak. I think if we have questions of what's happening with the money, I think that's our job as elected officials to, to, you know, point out. Um, and I know you do a tremendous job of going through the warrant, um, and, you know, anything that we get. So I, I mean, I, I feel comfortable where we are unless my board, unless the board disagrees with me. I mean, I think we have to allow, uh, the superintendent and the leadership of the district to, to utilize those funds that we, we advocate for. And, you know, they pretty much spell that out for us in December and January, like they, it's pretty, every dollar is pretty earmarked for the most part. The exception, maybe their instructional budgets, where you have some money to utilize.
I, with all due respect, I think it would be helpful for me as a committee member is if people are putting in requests for certain funds. I know things are earmarked, but I'd love to see through the warrant process, I want this because of this. This is why this is being purchased.
I'm sorry, are you looking for us to approve those?
No, well, no, cause we have that budget thing, but it would, it would give me some more insight to understand why things are coming and why they're needed. You know, we're, again, it's up to our administrators to control that money. I'm not saying that
Right.
at all, but it's also helpful for me to have a lens when I'm looking through warrants and saying, well, why is that there or what is that? Cause I can tell you, I use a lot of Mr. Ladoo's time at times and our superintendents should just ask for a little bit of clarification. Where if we just had a little form or something where people put in, so it's documented why they were asking for certain things.
I mean, but either way, you're gonna have to, if you see something on the warrant, you're gonna have to question it. So I just think
Yeah, we do.
You know, we have to have, you know, trust in the leadership, you know, it starts with the superintendent.
Yep.
You know, we, you know, we are his evaluator, we are his, you know, um, person he has to speak to, right? If we have concerns, you know, I just think we have to empower him to, again, if, if he's seeing things come across, question his building leaders, like what do we approve in ten thousand dollars for this floor? You know, or maybe he, him and his cabinet says, you know, if you're gonna purchase something at a certain criteria, price range, it has to run by me first, you know, maybe that's something that they can internally do.
And I know we do have that and we have our procedures and we have our books, but at that same time too, I know, and I've just kinda watched over the years that things come at certain waves and it would be nice if schools had things a little bit more structured. You know, like I'm gonna supple- submit POs for these things at this timeline and there's a more streamlined line for every school and there's a little bit more organization to things. But again, I don't wanna micromanage, I just think there could be some, I'd love to see us look into some other practices and look and try to grow there too.
I mean, I think the only thing I, I would say is, you know, that, and again, I don't even know if this is doable, but really when we look at the warrants, really have it streamlined differently where you can like broken down maybe by school or by departments?
Oh, it is. It is.
Well, I mean, sometimes it's hard to
They have all those codes.
To fo- well, the codes, but
Yeah.
I mean, again, I think we have to allow our superintendent, uh, to do his job. And part of his job is overseeing his, his building leaders or the building leaders and then managing the money with the business manager, making sure that it's being spent. Um, you know, we all know that, you know, the S R money is going away soon and we're gonna be back to the tight budgets. I mean, we still are a tight budget, but we're not gonna have a lot of the capacity that we have right now, so we really have to, again, be very, very, uh, tactful and mindful of how we spend our money. I agree.
Yeah.
And I, I think if the red flags come up, we reach out to the superintendent and he reaches out to his leaders.
Uh, pal, can I just ask if maybe a, a future meeting or even on the side, if you can have a, I guess, a more concrete example, cause I, I don't do that process, I've never been a part of that process.
Well, we all get those
I don't know if I understand exactly what you're
So we all get those warrants and we're all supposed to be reviewing them?
Which we do.
Which we do.
Yeah.
So you go through that process, I think, by going and looking at those warrants. And all I'm doing is I'm signing them and we're all supposed to be reaching out if we have any questions or concerns. It shouldn't just be me.
Yeah.
Um, but I certainly reach out a lot, um, if I do see something, uh, you know, and again.
I, I guess I, what I'm asking is just a specific example of where you think we need more information than what we get in those warrants.
Well, sometimes we get requests for different grants or different things and I might not have heard about it at school committee just yet. There might have not been a discussion for a certain thing.
Yeah.
Right? So I'm not aware of it, but I know we set aside that designated amount of money for the grants for those things. And I know we don't micromanage the whole entire pot of money. We say this is the money for X, Y, and Z. But when something comes through and I don't hear about it yet at a, at a school committee meeting, sometimes that does raise a flag for me cause I'm just not aware of it. And so I think that if there is some type of, a little bit of an explanation that when somebody puts in a PO, they explain this is for such and such a grant, this is the need, this is the why, the reason why we're doing it and this is why I'm putting it through, then for me anyways, when I'm reviewing those warrants, I don't have to track down Justin or everybody else. And it's evidence too, like we're being good stewards of your money and we're doing X, Y, and Z.
But that happens internally, that can't be something that's shared with us. I mean, I'm looking at the, one of the warrants right now, I mean, you're talking, I, I would need to know a warrant, why is Richard Doucema, Dushar getting paid? Why is this school pes- specialty four hundred and thir- like, there's lots of items on here and we know that that process is being done at the level, the building level, department level.
But it's our jo- but it's our job to do our due diligence, to understand all those dollars and cents and how they're being spent.
So if you look at the warrant and you question something, he's the guy we question.
I do. I do, but I would
He's the guy we question as well.
And, but I also think that, again, I wonder, you know, I hear from our teachers and they're saying, hey, I want this, I need this, I need that, are things fair, are things equitable, and things this? I don't know how the principals run it, right? And again, I'm not trying to micromanage, but maybe the principals do have, this is the pot of money and for my consumables and my non-consumables, each teacher gets an allocation of this amount of funds. And each teacher knows that they can advocate for this much and then when that's gone, it's gone. So they have to plan for what they need and they have to have their wish list. And then if we hear from our teachers or our administrators, they have a bigger wish or a bigger item, then we can advocate for that as a school committee and put that, a bigger money. That's what I'm looking for.
Well, right, but those discussions happen in December, November, December, where we're creating the budget so that we can advocate for what they need. And then once the budget gets approved, that's when we have to, again, we have to have trust and faith in our superintendent. Like I know as a building leader, I look at the instructional and I break it down by departments. Each department knows what they have, they come to me with needs, I usually don't say no ever. If it's gonna help kids, if it's gonna help instruction, we usually do it. I'm sure that's how they, you know, run it here, we're just not like passing out money. Cause if we are, it's gonna dry up quick, right? And, and we're not, and we're gonna have
And I'm not saying that we're just passing out money, but it helps me to understand what's going on a little bit more and I think we could make it so we all know a little bit more. And I think knowledge is power, that's all I'm saying. The more I know, the better, I feel better advocating.
I totally agree, for us to get this warrant, I mean, this warrant I'm looking at right here is like, uh, seventy-one pages.
I know, I look at all.
We're getting a ton of information there. For the principals to have to provide the, 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 the sign out, the, you know, the request sheet, so to speak, I, I just think is not a, I just don't think it's a thing, so.
I really do, I think it's micromanaging to nth degree.
So I would like to just, I, I would like to move this so we can get to the vote if there's no more discussion.
That's fine.
All right.
Good tip.
Ms. Cook?
Here, how you guys feel?
Yes.
Mrs. Forbes, just approving the minutes.
Yeah, yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Annema yes, five yes. Um, meeting minutes are approved. So central office, business office, end of year purchases. Mr. Ladoo. I'm just gonna pass the light, real, uh, the gavel, cause I do need to step out. Tell you.
Thank you so much for having me. Uh, members of the committee. Um, if I may, just first, I just wanna go over the importance of the identification and expending of any surplus budget items. Um, I guess first and foremost, any funding that is left over, while that is not expended between now and June thirtieth, uh, just so folks that are unaware, that money, uh, is inaccessible by the school department after June thirtieth. Um, that funding is turned back to the town and that town is normally certified as, uh, excuse me, that, that money's normally certified as free cash and it's normally used to fund capital projects. So again, any money that's not expended by June thirtieth, uh, i- it's gone essentially. You, you cannot carry it forward to, to fund future, uh, projects or anything like that. Um, that's your, where your fiscal twenty-three budget kicks in. Um, but just so everyone's aware, there, there is a, uh, timeline to how, how long we have to spend this money. Um, secondly, another important reason, uh, for the identification and, uh, expending this money down is the, um, it allows the school district to do things it normally wouldn't be able to in its normal operating budget without going to, through the capital process, which can take well over a year sometimes. Uh, so this is really monies that could be spent at the school committee's discretion. Uh, again, without going, going to town meeting, um, getting various approvals from various committees and, and, you know, similar to the capital process or, or, or any type of borrowing. Um, with that said, it's not unusual for the school department to end the year with anywhere from one percent to, I've seen up to five percent left over in the general operating budget. Um, now, percentage-wise, that might not seem like a lot. However, you know, when you're talking a eighteen point seven million dollar budget, uh, that can add up fairly quickly, resulting in hundreds of thousands of dollars left over at the end of the year. Um, now, for example, this year, we have, um, just in supplies and services, uh, one point six percent left. And what that translates to in dollars is three hundred and ten thousand. So we have roughly three hundred and ten thousand just in supplies and services that I've identified in surplus areas. The other part of this is normally, I, we like to bring this before the school committee, uh, at the end of the year as these things exceed any line level budgets. Um, so therefore we need approval to purchase these things. If you remember in prior years, I believe it was just last year, we purchased an ELA curriculum that was three hundred plus thousand. Um, you know, we, we prepaid some sped tuitions, um, which is good because if you have unforeseen move-ins, uh, that gives you the ability to fund those without having to impact staff or anything else. Um, so with that said, uh, again, three hundred and ten thousand is what has been identified so far. Um, this money does dry up as of six thirty, if it's not expended, it, it does revert back to the town. Um, in addition to that three hundred and ten thousand, we did prepay our sped, uh, tuitions last year, two hundred and sixty-eight thousand. And so the total of those two, um, five hundred and seventy-nine thousand is what we've identified thus far. Now, we still have two more payrolls to get through. Um, I believe one's on June twenty-third. However, the following payroll that occurs in July, most of it, it's what's called accrued, a lot of it's accrued back to the fiscal year as those folks have worked in the prior fiscal year, so that'll, uh, ninety percent of that belongs to the prior fiscal year as nine of the ten days will be in the prior fiscal year. All right, enough with the accounting. Does any further, any, any questions on anything before I move into the actual request?
I, I just, so basically we have five hundred and seventy-nine thousand.
Correct, and, and I just wanted to stress the importance that we have from today till June thirtieth to expend that funding. If we do not, it reverts back to the town and, uh, normally that's certified as free cash and is used for municipal capital projects. Is normally what happens with that money. Um, so a lot of times, you know, we go to administrative meetings and you'll, a lot of the administrators will hear me say, well, I need your wish list items. Meaning when, when I'm able to identify funding, a lot of stuff that you wouldn't be able to normally fund in your regular operating budget, we're able to do with this year on funding, so you're right. Um, without further ado, I'm just gonna jump right into some of the, the items that we're going to recommend to the committee for approval. Uh, the first one is the prepayment of collaborative tuitions. Uh, that amount is three hundred and twenty-six thousand. Now that is for six students we have at, uh, SWEC, Central Mass Collaborative and CAPS Collaborative. Um, the, as I said earlier, the prepayment gives us the flexibility for next school year in case we have any unforeseen, uh, added district placements. Um, I can share with the committee, at this point in time, we have three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in potential added district placements at this time. Let's say we have roughly five, five kiddos that are looking at added district. That does not mean it's going to happen for certain, but I just want the committee to be aware of that. Um, where if we do not fund this, that, that could have a negative effect on our operating budget for next year. The next item I have is the replacement of the seating modules, uh, on the OHS bleachers. If you remember back to two thousand and sixteen, there was a capital, uh, programs article to fund both the roof and the, well, a portion of the roof repairs and the bleachers at the high school. Uh, that, the, the roof repairs, uh, ate up all of the funding, so therefore there was nothing left to do the bleachers. Here we are, uh, six years later, uh, there still has been no changes on these bleachers and these, we did have a company come out, uh, roughly two months ago to do a, a analysis to see, you know, how safe they are and what, what, what could be done. Um, the results were, were not good. Um, I did initiate, just due to the safety issues, um, eleven thousand of a revolving account to, to fund just the initial safety things that needed to be addressed. Um, the second part of this, um, that Hussey Seating had recommended is replacing the, the plastic, uh, the actual plastic seating. Um, that dollar amount's thirty-one thousand dollars to replace the plastic seating. If anyone that's been in that gymnasium, you can see in some spots that plastic is cracked. Again, it's over twenty years old and, and it's, it's just kind of a shame, is something I thought we had addressed, uh, six years ago, really has not been addressed, it's kinda been just pushed aside. Uh, if there's no question, just gonna keep moving right through these things here. The next item I have is the upgrade, the hardware, hardware and software for our surveillance. That's all the cameras in the district, there's a hundred and eight cameras that we have. Um, the head end, if you will, the, the server. Um, let me back up a little bit. We've had a lot of requests to add additional cameras after some of the things that have happened this past year. The problem is, is we've maxed out, we cannot add any more cameras because the, um, hardware and software won't support it. Uh, we need to renew our license for the software additionally, uh, Signet, the company that we had went through, had to recommend, well, geez, they, they couldn't put new software on old hardware, so therefore we had to upgrade all the servers as well. Um, Kadian has done a ton of work on this and he has, if remember, uh, maybe some of the mi- members have heard me say, it's gonna be anywhere from, uh, fifty thousand to eighty thousand dollars to, to fix this. Um, Kadian has done a lot of work to try to drill this down. Um, at this point in time, um, he believes he can do it with twenty, just under twenty-seven thousand dollars. And that's to, he's going to purchase the, the hardware himself through Dell and only the license through Signet to, for the cameras. And again, that'll allow us to add more cameras so we can kinda satisfy some of those requests as they come in. Um, and, uh, that'll also renew our, our support. So if anything goes wrong with the camera system, we, we now have, we'll have support for that. Uh, moving right along, the, the next request we have from Athletics, uh, was for new field hockey goals and portable benches. Um, we received quite a few requests from Athletics, but we wanted to kinda minimize it only because, uh, otherwise you would see a list of all athletic equipment here. Um, I, I spoke with our athletic director today and he indicated the, the field hockey goals are, uh, over fifteen years old and some of the, the wood underneath, I guess, is broken, um, so that's why he wanted, this was his number one priority, was the field hockey goals. Also the, the benches, um, he's looking to repl- uh, purchase eight benches that, they're portable, that you would just take out to the field that the athletes could sit on, you know, during games. Um, he says that a lot of his, his current benches are broken and missing legs and various other things. So that request is for, uh, seventy-five hundred for the field hockey goals and the benches. The next item I have is shades and rollers, uh, in the elementary school cafeterias. Uh, I've received this request quite a few times from the elementary principals that the cafeterias get far too hot, um, especially during the summer months. Um, anyone that's been in those cafeterias can see up, on the upper part of the wall, those, uh, windows, there's, there's no shades or anything. So there's constant sun beating in all day. Um, this was put on capital as the first initial quotes we got was around thirty-five thousand dollars to put these in. Um, cause these are solar powered, uh, I believe it's controlled by a remote control, uh, rollers, so they can move them up and down by remote, similar to what you see in the high school auditorium. Those, cause, you know, you can't reach them, you can't move them. Um, so that's why these are still, in my opinion, a little expensive. Um, but this is to do both elementary schools, all the windows and the cafeterias, and that's for solar powered shades. Uh, the next item I have is a hundred Chromebooks. During a lot of the budget presentations, you might have heard that, uh, we're we're trying to get these Chromebooks in into a replacement cycle. We did include a lot in next year's operating budget. However, we're not so sure it's gonna be enough. Back to capital purchases, back in roughly two thousand and sixteen, there was initial outlay, uh, that that allowed us to purchase all these Chromebooks for the high school. Mr. Phillips tells me these have a shelf life of about five years and wear right at the end of that. So, we have to do something to start funding these Chromebooks, uh, to sustain the one-to-one, uh, rollout. Lastly, uh, I have the, a floor washer for middle school. In prior years, I've come before the committee for approval for a floor washer. Now, this is the machine that washes the floor in the building. We were able to do, I believe, all the other schools over the prior years. Middle school is the last school we have not replaced that floor washer. That floor washer was last purchased in two thousand and five. So, it's getting a little old. Again, that that's the smallest request we have, is for fifty-six hundred dollars for that floor washer. Just to kind of wrap up here, that still leaves a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars unidentified. Again, I had mentioned earlier that we still haven't got through all the payrolls yet, so there's still, we're still going here to get through the end of the fiscal year.
Could I just?
Certainly.
Ask you to, so the second time you've alluded to that. Do you anticipate any issues with the next two payroll periods?
Uh, I can tell you the, a few of the schools have run out of substitute funding, so we'll see what that's gonna be at the end of this, uh, end of this week. No, I, uh, we're just working through all the lump sum payouts. That was just, uh, three point one million last week that we paid out. So, we're we're pretty much through the the bigger section of it. No, I don't, I actually anticipate some more money left over. I just don't know how much yet. I'll put it that way. The thing that I'm very concerned about, I know we've had a lot of conversations about this, um, is the unemployment liability for your ESR positions. We've let go quite a few ESR positions and we've had a few non-renewals. At this point in time, I have calculated the maximum liability, two hundred and eighty-four thousand. That's the maximum for what has happened, uh, in the past thirty days or so. Does that mean it that it's gonna cost the district two hundred and eighty-four thousand? No. Many of these folks will still, uh, you know, might find unemployment elsewhere, you know, a- anything could happen. That's just the maximum that the liability is for.
And how many positions is that?
I don't want to misspeak. I I could, I could give you a figure on that. But just to kind of finish up, I thought that was part of the reason to leave that one forty-three still. Again, I know those are gonna be additional surplus funds. My intention would be to have the, to recommend to the committee to maybe sponsor an article at town meeting, a future town meeting, to appropriate any of this free cash that's left over to fund the unemployment.
Right, cause normally, the town picks up that side. So, if we were generous and we give that, that would be helpful to them.
So, just, I don't have a crystal ball, but if that is just left unfunded and the town gets hit, you know, hard with with unemployment, that'd be coming out of your operating budget. Would be my sneaking suspicion.
So, if we put a warrant requested for that, would it be?
Yeah, it hasn't opened yet, but, you know, we have a meeting, I would say, the first week in October, the the fall town meeting.
So, how would we have to do that, though? If we're, if we're, the money's going back to the town, it will just go back to town, but we need to ask for the warrant to specifically earmark that money. Otherwise, we need to spend that money and then we know we have it available if they do, if it, meaning that, like, pre-spend it, right? So, we know that that would, that liability would not be as hard on us if it, if the town did take that amount off, right, on the other side. So, my thought would be, could we prepay fuel costs? Am I making sense?
I I'm sorry, I lost your point with her.
I think, I think what she's talking about is taking that one forty-three, prepaying some costs, and then if we have to pay the unemployment.
Well, if the town has to pay for us and they say that it's not gonna, it's gonna come out of our budget.
Right.
If they're gonna say that, then we would already have prepaid something else. So, it wouldn't.
I I wouldn't recommend, uh, using your operating budget to fund something like that. What what I'm saying is you would leave money on the table that would be essentially free cash and you would, uh, sponsor a town meeting article to appropriate that free cash to to fund your unemployment.
So, basically, we'd be asking for it back?
Exactly.
Well.
Right?
Yes.
Not really.
But, so.
You don't really have a mechanism in your operating buzzet to budget to just pay something that doesn't, doesn't happen.
But we were asking for it back, wouldn't we already have paid out unemployment by October?
You would have a better idea as to what the liability is come October.
Right. Okay.
Right now, the maximum's two eighty-four. It could be a hundred thousand.
But normally, the town picks that, uh, the town side.
But it's also something to consider as we get towards the end of the ESR funding. Do you want to prepay using whatever monies were left over in this fiscal year for for that future liability? And that's something we can talk about.
That's a good point.
All right, any questions about the, um, or comments about the one, two, three, four, five, six, seven items that have been brought forth to us, recommended uses for, uh, the surplus money? I I guess, though, the one question I would have, Tara? Do you mind coming up, Ms. Trainor? And I guess, I don't know if this is a you question or a Kadian question or a combination, but the unified, uh, insights?
Yes.
I mean, I, if we're looking to do that, do you have a ballpark number? Because I would certainly like to see if you use some of this money to to get that.
Yeah, so it is.
Or or something similar to what Mrs. Griffin was talking about.
Yeah, it's twenty thousand to get started and then it's an additional eleven thousand every year. And and I will say, the reason why we liked it was because parents already have the username and password and it wasn't learning a new system. So, we thought, what would be the smartest plan and play for parents, so that everything they get is in one platform? Which is why we really looked at it. We did look at other systems as well that were about the same amount of money, cause everyone's about the same. We checked in with, um, Worcester, they use, I forget what it was, but we checked with other towns, what do you use? And then, you know, we got quotes from, Kadian got a few quotes from other towns and then they were all pretty comparable and we just thought the Power School was the smartest one, just due to the fact that parents already have access.
And the uploading of the data that's on our end?
Yes, so what will happen is, is that, um, most likely, it will be Kadian and Suzanne Kelly, who then will be uploading this information with programs that are not directly connected, like our math program and our ELA program. They get loaded up as a CSV file, so we, you know, like, so it, then it would be up to either myself to load the file to give to Suzanne to put into Power School, or we just give Suzanne a username and password to, uh, those two platforms and then she can then, you know, load them up once. But once the testing is done, then I can let her know this stuff is ready to load. It's kind of like that stuff, but it's about twenty, it is twenty thousand, cause I've seen the quote. It's twenty thousand and then it's ten thousand nine hundred ninety-five dollars a year.
So, I know I've pulled you up and, I don't know if Justin, if Justin was anxious about that, but what, I guess, what was the plan? If we, if we're gonna move forward with this, what is the plan? Cause it wasn't in the budget that we approved in the, in the fall. Right, so, is this something that, I guess, to the superintendent, have you guys had discussions about this?
We we have, but we were waiting for Kadian to have the final blessing to make sure we can access it, parents can access it, and it's gonna work on all fronts. And I was waiting for that final word. Once that happened, we were gonna figure out our funding.
All right. Uh, I don't know, questions? I know I just brought that up.
It's a good question.
Just, uh, if I may, just two comments on that. If we were to initiate that license, unfortunately, it would, uh, we wouldn't be able to pay from this fiscal year, as it wouldn't start until seven one. We wouldn't start a license, you know, for a few days. It would start seven one for next fiscal year. We wouldn't be able to pre, pre-buy that with, using this funding. One way you could get around it is, you know, any, um, monies you had earmarked for Chromebooks here for next fiscal year. By buying those Chromebooks now, you essentially freed up that Chromebook money for next year, so you could just repurpose that twenty grand to to purchase the software, if you wanted to do it that way.
All right.
So, buy some extra Chromebooks? That's what I'm hearing?
Yeah, you you could absolutely do that.
Yeah, so use some of the money to buy, beef that up and then Chromebook money for next year.
Right.
Take a piece of that to pay.
To pay for the software.
Yeah, cause I, I think that's important. I mean, if this, if this does what it sounds like, you told, you told us it's gonna do, I I think it's, we we gotta get it.
Yeah, we could certainly do that.
All right, so, so I've heard, I've heard some different things, like, replace the field hockey goals. I've heard some people say there's really no need to do that. It should have been done a while ago. Portable benches, did you say that would be used just for field hockey or other sports too?
It's my understanding it would be all sports.
All sports, all right.
It was eight, eight benches he was looking for.
Okay. So, if we were gonna free up, if we were gonna add some more to the Chromebooks to free up, what would you suggest we do?
Um, I would tap into the one forty-three that's left over. Cause a- as I mentioned earlier, I I believe that there'll be some more left over in salaries, but I I can't say for certain until I get through some payrolls. So, you you would drop that down maybe another twenty grand.
So, would you, you're looking at another hundred Chromebooks or are you looking at a smaller number?
I'd look at a smaller number.
So, we don't wanna get into that cycle now, we've got too many that need to be replaced.
Twenty thousand dollars worth to to free up that funding. That that's just my recommendation. I'd have to get another quote, uh, refresh quote from Mr. Phillips, but I'm sure he has some pull over it.
Wait, that's still confusing me. I'm so sorry. Can I ask a question from this side? Okay, so, if, if we still cannot purchase the Power School upgrade until after July first, what does that have to do with the Chromebook money from right now?
Cause the Chromebooks are for next year.
Kadian has budgeted for, for.
And we're gonna spend it now, so it'll be available.
If you buy the Chromebooks now.
Okay, I got it. So, you're gonna, like, add twenty thousand here, you're thinking?
We're gonna use some money out of this.
Okay, and then grab that twenty thousand.
On the other end, we could take it out of the general operating budget for fiscal twenty.
You could certainly do that, yeah.
All right, are there any other questions about the seven items? And then I think if we do make a motion to approve, that we could, um, just say that we're gonna replace. I I don't know how we would make the motion, but we would add.
Increase the purchase of Chromebooks to a hundred and fifty?
To a hundred and twenty.
Yeah, not to exceed.
That you said.
Yeah, not to.
Not to exceed a hundred and fifty.
Yes.
A hundred Chromebooks with licenses is twenty-nine thousand.
Correct.
So, would you?
I'm comfortable if you added just another fifty, that that would be enough to cover the cost.
So, that, to replace a hundred and fifty with the adjusted number?
Yeah.
Okay, so, we need a motion, we could approve it all as one, right? We don't need it item to item. So, we need a motion to approve the set, the, um, recommended uses of the identified surpluses with the adjustment to a hundred and fifty Chromebooks.
Okay.
All right, so if somebody wants to make that motion.
I'll make the motion to accept the list of items presented before us for approval with the change of a hundred and fifty Chromebooks instead of a hundred with licenses.
But if you're saying that's gonna cost twenty thousand, right, we'd still need five thousand five hundred dollars, so we would need some more Chromebooks. Right, cause fifty Chromebooks would not, they'd be like two hundred and ninety something.
It'd be forty-nine thousand is is my ballpark figure, that what that would increase to. Um, so, you're gonna be about a thousand short, but I I'm confident that Kadian could find the money in his operating budget for a thousand dollars.
I'm just, I, I didn't know, I didn't know if we need to go a little bit higher on that number, that's all I'm saying, for the Chromebooks, because.
I think the fear on the other end is then we have a lot that have to be replaced at the same time, if we go to two hundred, right? Then we have two hundred Chromebooks that are gonna, and their end of life will be at the same time, will be in that problem we're trying to avoid.
Yeah, I already think, though, we have a, well, I don't know, maybe I'm wrong, but I.
Yeah, no, it's a good point, but I think, listening to the, uh, to Mr. Ladue, it sounds like that that the money, you know, they'll find that thousand.
A few thousand dollars.
Yeah, it's not a.
All right.
So, we have a motion on the floor. Was there a second? I apologize if there was.
I don't think so.
All right, motion, a second, any more discussion? Call for the vote, Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Ms. Forbes?
Yes.
Mrs. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mama, yes. I guess the only, so that approved, that that's approved. I guess the only thing, um, the one, whatever that number is, we have to make a motion to have that go in the war, uh, to town meeting?
No, we're not prepared for that yet.
Right, okay, so we can do, but can we carry that money over into the new fiscal year?
No.
No.
But there might be some other un- anticipated things coming through the warrant. That's what I thought I heard you say, like, cause we still don't know what's gonna happen in the next.
Oh, understood, but Mr. Ladue was talking about, we would, we would get this on the warrant for the fall. My question is, where does this money go? This one forty-three, which might be lower or higher, where is that money going when June thirtieth?
Back to the town.
It goes back to the town.
Right, but do we have to make a motion here that we want this to go? Or do you, I guess, how do we?
We're not prepared for that yet.
They open.
The warrant article.
Yes.
We'll have it on your agenda to.
Okay. So, when that money goes back, we still have the authority to appropriate it how, how we want it?
Well, the town would have.
Sort of, kind of, but not really.
Yes.
Right, okay.
You would request town meeting to appropriate that.
Right, okay. And I'm sure the finance committee would appro, like, it would be, I'm sure back.
I'm sure they will, because they'll have to pay that bill.
Again, we'll have a better idea.
Okay, I just, just making sure it was clear. All right, very good.
Okay.
All right, anything else for you, right?
Thank you, Justin.
All right, superintendent report, uh, district learning recovery and acceleration plan, can you give us an update?
All right, thank you. Before I discuss some ESR position changes, um, we did have a special ed teaching position become open that we realized we did not need to fill next year and as a result, we are turning that position into a second district school psychologist that will help support students with social emotional behavior needs, especially at the middle school and high school next year. And that is part of the general budget. That'll work with student staff and families on student behaviors. I know we talked about this earlier in the general budget, we couldn't fit it in there, but we can now. So, I just wanted you aware of it. We feel like it is really needed now more than ever and so, we're excited to have that position. I just wanted to let you, that's general budget. For ESR position adjustments, um, we're not gonna need the second year of our Spanish position at the high school, after reviewing drafts of the high school schedule. It's just not gonna be needed. We don't have enough student requests, um, so we should be in very good shape there. We also had originally budgeted for, uh, the stipend for the pre-K twelve health and wellness coordinator that Nurse Grenette, um, did for the past year. And the nurses obviously did a wonderful job getting us through COVID and the pandemic and we had planned on a high school nurse again. Instead, Nurse Grenette is gonna go back to her position at the high school, um, as the nurse there. And she's also gonna teach our CNA class that we've talked about as our new class there. You need an RN to teach that. One of the positions we are asking for is an LPN for the district. Uh, this person would create coverage for other schools when nurses are out part of the day or the whole day. We know it's harder and harder to find nursing subs. We, this person could also sub for our medically fragile kids who require one-to-one LPM during the school day. It's hard to find those subs as well. They can assist with the vision, hearing, postural BMI screenings, especially the middle school has four grades now. It can also cover the office when she's available, when Nurse Grenette's teaching her class, setting up labs for the kids. This is becoming a best practice across kind of the country since COVID, um, in reaching out to superintendents locally, Lester, Milbury, Southbridge, Dudley, Charlton, to name a few districts, are all planning on having a floating nurse or LPN next year. So, we feel like this would really help meet our district needs and again, make sure that none of our schools are not covered during the school day. Another position we're looking for is a teaching assistant at the middle school. This will provide academic support to students who are assigned to the transitional or support room, um, during the school day when needed. When we have student conflicts or incidents that happen in the school, we, our administrators need time to investigate properly, keep students academically on track. This person, teaching assistant, will communicate with teachers and counselors to get the kids what they need immediately, keep them academically focused and return to the classroom as soon as possible. When there are no students in the room, this teaching assistant would also be pushed into classrooms with the schedule to support student learning. And then the last position, we had kind of already pre-approved it, but I wanted to make sure it was on the radar, um, is the dean of students for the high school. We do feel we need that position for one more year to help us. We're very excited. We have new leadership coming in there. We do feel like we need that for one more year at the high school. So, in summary, tonight, I need a vote for, from you on the LPN, the teaching assistant and the dean of students, is what I'm asking for a vote tonight to approve.
I've got a question.
Yes.
So, dean of students at the high school, I kind of wonder why the dean of students needs to be still at the high school if we have so many more students in our middle school. I wonder about our middle school. I just feel like, God bless them. I know how, it's, those are trying years and I, and we're gonna have so many more students in that building.
We did discuss this and, um, our middle school leadership felt like they really needed a teaching assistant for transition room would help. This person could go down to the middle school and help out if there were some things going on and help assist them if that's needed, that is possible. But at this time, we felt like that's what we, we. Um, but at this time, we felt like that's what we, we would need for our school building, for the middle school.
So you really want the person just still at the high school?
Yes.
Is it available for the middle school if needed?
Absolutely.
The dean of students?
Yes, we talked about that as well, yeah. If something happens in the morning or there's a fight or something, we absolutely could have this person go down and assist.
Could, um, so I, it's not in the packet, like, these positions, could you just say those again? I know you said dean of students, school psych- psychologist, right?
Yeah, this, the.
Do you have it, like, I remember last year we had a, all the positions captured and where they are, could you, is that something?
Yeah, the district. Yeah. Second district psychologist is just in the general budget.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Is there a way that you could send us?
Sure.
The LPN was the other one you're missing. The LPN, the TA.
Well, I'd still like to know what we're doing with all the other positions.
Sure.
Like, I know some of the principals talked tonight about, we have this, we have that. If we could just get like a sheet?
Sure. Yeah, absolutely. It's an update, sure.
Yeah, where everybody is. I know we won't be meeting again until July, but maybe if you could forward that, so we can take a look at it.
Yep. Sure.
Cause I, I just wanna see how many positions we have total, where they're at, what building they're at, what their roles are.
And I know, if I may through the chair, that you just spoke about foreign language, and our eighth graders this year had the opportunity to take foreign language.
Yes.
Do they have the opportunity to take foreign language still at the middle school, moving back to the middle school?
That, that ESR position is still intact. The Spanish teacher at the middle school is still there.
Okay, so that Spanish teacher at the middle school will take on eighth grade students too, and they have that available in their schedule, that they have enough?
Amy, do it, do eighth graders?
Right now, we're doing sixth and seventh grade, we're shifting to seventh and eighth grade, that's all.
But, so the sixth graders won't have it available to them?
The sixth grade will have it as a, like, a order period, so.
Uh, say it again, I didn't hear you.
So the sixth, fifty-sixth, seventh, and eighth, but we're shifting, well, seventh grade, we'll do the seventh grade to have the double block, we'll shift to eighth grade next year. And then she'll have a block, and seventh grader block, and the sixth grade. Yeah, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade will all have Spanish.
But the seventh graders this year were blessed enough to have a double block, and that will not be available to them.
Right. Well, no, because I have, only have one teacher, and I have to start as, and I have four children, so.
Hmm. I just don't like coming back on what we have, if we don't, I don't know. Like, what was the purpose of that double block? There must have been some good thought there, right?
Well, we were thinking that they're gonna be transitioning up to eighth grade, so they needed a longer block of Spanish, so now the eighth graders transitioning to high school, we need that longer block.
Ah, sorry, I'm slow. Alright, I get it now. So the eighth graders would have the double block, got it.
Alright, so. Alright, so the superintendent will give us an update, uh, like a, to capture the plan.
Sure.
But do, we do need to vote on these positions?
Yeah, this, on new ESR positions, we're supposed to get a vote from you guys, yes.
And could you just repeat the positions one more time? I'm sorry.
Yeah, LPN.
Yep.
Um, the teaching assistant at the middle school, and the dean of students, the high school.
Dean.
So the dean of students was there, but it's, so it's really not new, right?
And you said school psychologist.
Right, it's not new. Just we're doing it for, adding it for another year.
Alright, so we do need to, to, somebody needs to make a motion to approve these two additions and one, uh, staying, essentially?
Is the dean, like, is that a job that's gonna be posted again, or is Mr. Richards still gonna be the dean?
It's, it's a job that's gonna be posted again. We were waiting for the new principal to become on board July first and allow them to be part of that process.
Okay, okay.
Good question. So if I may, uh, off of your question, it makes me think job description, I'm assuming, will be updated?
Yep.
So do we wanna put in the jo- updated job description that they would also be between two buildings based on need?
Yep.
Right?
Yep.
Well, I'm.
Well, I mean, you gotta put these things in job descriptions.
I mean, the superintendent can assign anybody wherever he wants, so if there's a need, he moves the person there.
Yeah.
I don't know if we wanna put it in the job description, I don't think it needs.
I don't know why we wouldn't, but that's just my opinion. I like transparency.
I mean, the plan is that this person would assist, we, we have a lot of work we wanna do at the high school next year, we're very excited.
We do.
But obviously, if something happened and Amy and Mike needed assistance, we would have this person go down, as we would, might, we might have our assistant principal go down and help out, so.
I don't, I know it probably happens a lot. I just, I would think that they, I guess what I'm torn with is I would think that they would need more, and I would be, I feel like advocating, and I could be wrong, this is just my impression, that it, there should be forethought to make sure that person is available for more, and plan it, and if we don't need it, then we're okay. But if we don't plan, and we need, then we're scrambling in that, and we don't have a good system in place from the get-go, I'd rather prepare for the worst-case scenario and then pull back. That's just my feeling.
Right, but you're talking about a job description.
Yes, but at the same time.
The job description is the dean of students.
But if we're reposting the position and we're rehiring somebody to come in the district, and the thought is, is it, I guess this is where I'm seeking for clarification, is it only gonna be for the high school, and that's what I'm hearing more so, like, and then occasionally if they're needed at the middle school?
Yes, that's what the plan was.
That's what it sounds like, the superintendent's plan is.
Yes.
And I think that.
And I just wish I occasionally would be more defined for me, but that's all.
I think the superintendent and the administration has the flexibility to do that with any of their positions that, as administrators, we go to each other's buildings all the time to help out if, if we need calls. You know what I mean?
I don't know that per se. I mean, every district's different. Every district is run differently.
So, so what, you, you also gotta look at too, we have a, a brand-new leader coming in down into a, a building that needs a culture shift, an accountability shift, so you're gonna need more hands on deck to start. I would assume that the goal potentially will be to wean that off. But when you have a new person coming in who has to change the culture of, uh, four grade levels that have been here, right?
Yeah.
For the last couple of years, the support I think is needed, and then I think you can look to provide, I mean, you have a couple of things. You can go block, well, John's leaving, so, yeah, Rob, block your ears if you're watching. You could also go down and look at the assistant principal that's at the elementary level. Is there a need there? Is the need maybe to be able to shift up to the middle school if needed, right? I mean, there's only a couple of grades in each of those buildings. Is there a need for that? So you could look on both ends of it, but I think from what it sounds like, they wanna give the, and can you publicly announce? Have you done that yet? I know an email's gone out, but to the.
Yes, they have. Yes, they have. Yes, that was on my next thing.
Oh, okay.
I need a vote first.
Alright, so let's, let's, sorry, it's start nine and tip-offs coming, and I'm having eaten supper and.
Jumping to the question.
Hell, it's gonna add up on me.
Um, I just, clarification for the vote on the LPN and the TA. Are those one-year or are they two-year now that ESR has extended for an additional?
They're one-year.
They're both one-year. Thank you.
Alright, so we have a, no, we don't have a motion yet, so discussion, yes, Mr. Burke?
I don't have a motion.
I, I just have a question that I'm, and I'm not even sure how to ask it, because I think it's going to our executive session later. How soon would you be looking to post these positions if I were to ask us to delay this vote tonight?
Uh, as soon as possible.
I, I guess I, and like I said, I don't know how to ask the question in regular session, it's an executive session question, so.
I mean, you could ask to delay the vote. I mean, our next meeting is July.
That kills.
July, totally.
That kills Mike. That's, that's why I was asking that question.
Yeah, no, that doesn't do us any good.
Yeah. Can we come out of executive session, or does it have to be posted, that we will come out of executive session and have another?
You would have to have posted it that way.
Yeah, and we didn't post it that way.
Well, I'm gonna do it.
I don't know what to do with that.
If I could, I'm gonna make a motion.
Alright, so we have a motion to approve the.
To approve these three, we'll be fine. We have to, we'll be fine.
So what is your motion?
Uh, my motion is to approve the three recommended positions for the one-year LPN, the one-year TA, right?
TA.
And the one-year dean for Oxford High School.
Alright, so a motion, do we have a second?
So, this is what's making me uncomfortable before I second. I don't know the, the cost of any of these positions.
I have the cost, I can give you the cost.
Yeah, that would be, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's okay.
I didn't, it's like.
Well, that's what I'm gonna ask you. The superintendent will send us all, like, the whole plan for where everybody's going with the cost. Like last year, where we had the thirty-seven positions, we knew where they all were going. We'll get that.
Yeah. I feel like I'm putting the cart before the horse.
You wanna call Mr. Ladue up to ask if, is on, I mean, I'm sure he's looked at the numbers, we're, we're within the, the ESR funding to be able to do these.
We certainly have funding available for these two positions, I'm sure.
Right. Right.
Okay.
It seems like more than two positions. It's the nurse, it's the psychologist.
And it is ESR.
No, the psychologist, the operator.
Well, just the wash, cause we got rid of somebody else, I'm sorry.
The operator.
A TA at the middle school.
And the dean of students is already there.
He's already there. I'm sorry, I'm slow. Again, I think it's the hour. It's made, past my bedtime, I'm turning into a pumpkin. Holy smokes, it's nine o'clock.
So we do have a motion, is there a second? Second, Ms. Cook is seconding, any more discussion? Call for the vote, Ms. Cook, Mrs. Forbes, Mrs. Griffin.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Oh, my poor children.
They're voting no.
And I'm a yes, four yes, one no, passes. Personal updates, Mr. Lucas.
Um, our new principal at Oxford High School is Miss Rebecca Zernicky. Uh, we announced it by way of email to staff, students, and families yesterday. Very excited to bring her in. Um, she will be starting on July first for us. Um, Mr. Zernicky is currently finishing her third year as the principal at the Hope Academy Charter School in Providence. Previously that, she was at Bartlett High School in Webster as a teacher, instructional coach, and the last six years there as an assistant principal. Um, the search committee did a great job over weeks looking for the best candidate. Uh, we had several final candidates that were very strong, but in the end, Mr. Zernicky, uh, we felt was the best fit for our high school. Very excited to have her here, uh, joining us on July first.
Alright, congratulations, uh, Mrs. Zernicky. We look forward to meeting you, having you come in front of the board, um, at some point. Welcome aboard.
Yes. Um, the search for the new principal at Barton is underway. Congratulations to Mr. Quinn, who's still here. He's appointed the assistant director of the MSAA, um, and he'll be with us through the end of July. Congratulations, John.
Yeah.
We're gonna miss him, it's been, been a pleasure working with him. Um, update on personnel changes. Tara August Ostinsky and Kayla Bose have left us from EduCare. We have two new substitute teachers, Taylor Coonan and Maria Murphy, our substitutes that we've had. It's nice to have the college kids returning and helping us out with that. We have several summer school instructional aides. Julia Duquette, Christian Niles, Caitlin Palmer, and Catherine Staple will be joining us this summer.
Anything else, Superintendent?
Just wanted to thank everybody at the high school. We had a wonderful ceremony, uh, last Friday night, it was a great graduation, we had a great night. All the, all the staff and volunteers, uh, could not have gone better, and congratulations to the class of twenty twenty-two. It was a great night.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for the superintendent from any of the members? Alright, we will go down to fiscal twenty-three appointments. We do need subcommittee reps. So you have in our, we have in our packet the expectations of a subcommittee chair. Schedule meetings during the course of the school year, primarily between September and June. Work with the executive assistant, assistant to post agendas for all meetings in accordance with the open meeting law. Ensures minutes are recorded for all subcommittee meetings, meetings. Minutes should be forwarded to the executive assistant for filing with the town office clerks, or town clerk's office. Reports at each school committee meeting on the subcommittee's work, and ensures the full school committee is aware of the next scheduled subcommittee meeting. So we have, uh, one, two, three, four, five, um, subcommittees. There's five of us, two of us on each subcommittee, so breaks down to two and two and two if we're all into it. So I'll go to the policy committee, we're currently, uh, Pal is the chair, and I'm the vice chair. Uh, does anybody have interest in being on that committee?
All you.
Do we wanna stay status quo?
Fine by me.
Alright, I'll stay. Uh, the personnel and negotiation committee, uh, Cory in September, Cory's the chair, September's the vice. Does anybody have interest?
Love to stay.
Stay on it?
Yeah, cause you have no contract.
Shh, we deserve to stay.
Yeah, we do. A year of glory.
Alright, we'll stay.
God bless you guys.
Uh, and Mr. Chair, I highlighted a section on that. I didn't know if you wanted to review that.
Oh, yes.
Actually changing it. That didn't necessarily happen?
Yes, yes, it did not.
With the subcommittee, I didn't know if that was something you'd be looking to change.
That's a good, uh, any thoughts on that? I know I think I'm the one who brought this up, and then I neglected to follow through with it. Uh, do you wanna be responsible for creating the calendar and facilitating the process in the annual evaluation of the superintendent, or is that something?
I mean, we kinda have a process. The alternative is the chair.
Oh, yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
We what?
I said the alternative is the chair, that's how we.
Right.
It was really just kinda great in the process.
That's your job.
Yeah, alright, see, I mean, if you wanna strike it out, that's fine.
Just saying. Uh, would it be better served on our committee?
I, I mean, I just thought it would be better for you guys to handle it, but.
Or we could, in the past, we've done, done it as a whole committee, which is hard to do too.
Right, I think it's just easier, either you continue to do it or hand it to us if you would prefer. Cause I don't think it's a terrible thing to do. Like you said, it's hard for all of us to try to figure it out together, and if it's presented and people can't come, then it is what it is, right?
Yeah, I mean, I'm fine with taking it on or we.
Alright, you're hired.
I guess, I'll, I'll defer to the chairs, the chair and the vice chair of this committee.
You're hired. I give you my vote, Dave. What do you think, Cory?
Yeah, I, I think that's a tough thing for a committee to do.
I think we kinda have to do it together. So you bring it to us.
Well, I bring it to us.
Right, you bring it to us and we, right.
Yeah, just so that we're all on the same page on one side.
You propose the calendar, and we just all talk about it at a meeting.
Yeah, it's just. Alright, so do we need to make a motion to strike that, or?
Uh, no, that's okay.
Just take that out, and then review job descriptions and salary ranges? That, I, was that always in the?
That hasn't been done since I've been here, so.
No.
Right.
I think it's nice though, I like that idea.
I, I don't mind leaving that in, if we actually do it, but.
I think we should all do it again as a committee.
I mean, we definitely review job descriptions, right?
Right, right.
They usually are up to the whole.
Brought to the whole committee.
Right.
Right.
So, by, by letter of this policy, well, by letter of this description, it should have been going to you guys first, then to us.
Right.
I think.
That might be a time lapse if there's not a meeting.
I just think it should just come to all of us again.
Yeah, so strike that one, too.
Same way we've done it.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, so Cory will stay the chair, September the vice, school building and safety.
Goodness.
Tem- uh, excuse me, Molly and I are on this.
You happy with it?
Alright, you happy with the vice chair, or do you wanna chair it?
No.
Oh, yeah, she does. She's had a year, give her a chair.
Alright, district accountability and curriculum, uh, Pal and Cory are co-chairs.
I would, I would be interested in staying.
Pal.
Yes.
And then, uh, di- diversity, equity, inclusion, September and Molly.
I'm definitely staying.
Okay, as the chair, Molly the vice.
I'm sure I'll be chair.
So we need a motion, um, we need to vote on the subcommittee representatives, so if we make a motion to, uh, maintain the twenty, twenty-one, twenty, twenty-two.
Two.
I make that motion.
Subcommittee, subcommittees, um, for the twenty-two, twenty-three, alright?
Yeah, I made it.
I made that motion.
Alright, did you capture that?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, is there a second? Uh, excuse me, is there any discussion? Call for the vote, Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Mrs. Forbes.
Yes.
Mrs. Griffin.
Yes, sorry.
Sorry.
I'm checking on my kids.
Mr. Burke, and I'm a yes, that's five yes.
Can we, okay.
That passes, warrants.
If anybody crying.
Uh, authorized signer, we do need to have an authorized signer.
Sorry. I'll still sign if people want me to.
I want to sign.
Yes, so somebody make a motion to.
Make a motion for Pal, Mina Griffin to be our authorized signer?
And I second that motion.
Alright, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Call for the vote, Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Mrs. Forbes.
Yes.
Mrs. Griffin.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
And just for transparency's sake, if something happens to me, I, like, I can't go and sign, I tapped on the chair shoulder, like, I get gravely ill, so I don't infect the central office.
Okay, Central Mass Collaborative Board of Directors. Am I supposed to read something? Helen, I don't have anything unless I misplaced it in my pens.
Make a motion for Mr. Lucas to serve as the Central Mass Collaborative Board of Directors?
I second.
Absolutely. Thanks. No, good.
All right, any discussion?
No, great, thanks.
Call for the vote, Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Mrs. Forbes.
Yes.
Mrs. Griffin.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
I'm a yes. We also need the Southern Worcester County Educational Collaborative Board of Directors.
Make a motion for Mr. Lucas to be the representative for the Southern Worcester County Education Collaborative Board.
There's a second?
Second.
Discussion?
No.
Call for the vote, Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Mrs. Forbes.
Yes.
Mrs. Griffin.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
I'm a yes. Homeschool applications, authorized approver. I'm assuming that's Mr. Lucas. We need a motion to.
Make a motion to make Mr. Lucas the homeschool applications authorized approver.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Yes.
Sorry. I second that.
Griffin, is there any discussion? Call for the vote, Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Mrs. Forbes.
Yes.
Mrs. Griffin.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
I'm a yes. District Legal Counsel, Merrick and O'Connell. Is our current, I make, somebody can make a motion that we keep.
Make a motion that we maintain Merrick and O'Connell as our counsel.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Call for the, call for the vote. Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Mrs. Forbes.
Yes.
Mrs. Griffin.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
I'm a yes. Subcommittee reports, Policy Subcommittee, Mrs. Griffin.
We did not meet last time cuz we did not have a quorum. So we don't really have any fantastic updates this evening.
Okay. Personnel and Negotiations Subcommittee.
We are ongoing negotiations with the OEA, and I believe we have a agreement to ratify tonight. Is that correct with the clerical? Thank you.
All right. School Buildings Safety Committee Subcommittee. Excuse me. We do have here our annual school building walkthrough schedule. Is this something we need to approve or vote on?
You don't have to vote on it. I'm just looking for your general consent to go with one of those dates. Those were the two dates based on what we did last year.
All right, I know I have some responsibilities in my school district so much, those dates seem like I'm tied up, but if I can't be there, then somebody else can.
Yeah, I'm fine if they're one. I'll be there.
Me, too.
Um.
Not that I'm on that committee yet. I'll be there.
I would say Tuesday would be the better one, maybe if I can get there. So do you just wanna lock in Tuesday?
Yep.
And then we'll go from there. All right, thank you. District Account, District Accountability and Curriculum Subcommittee. I know we have Mrs. Trainer coming up in a minute to give us some data. So we'll wait, we'll wait till we get her up. And then the Dec, Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Subcommittee. Any reports from?
We also did not have a quorum, but it was our last meeting, and just still looking for new membership, so. And I do, just as an update, have a Zoom meeting with somebody who is the chief, the CEO of the DEI of the Cambridge Public Schools. So hopefully, we're gonna learn some better ways to include our community and get some new membership and learn some things. That's thanks to Justin.
Excellent. If you could just hit the pause button for one second, Mrs. Trainer. I do just wanna have our warrant report, Mrs. Griffin, if you could do that, so I don't forget it, cuz I think I'll probably forget it. If you don't mind doing that.
I don't mind at all. So I have the warrant report for this evening, June thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. I signed a payroll warrant dated May twenty-six, twenty twenty-two for seven hundred fifty-six thousand, twenty dollars and eighty-five cents. An accounts payable warrant dated May thirty-first, twenty twenty-two for a hundred twenty-one thousand, eight hundred ninety-nine dollars and twenty-one cents. An accounts payable warrant dated June seventh, twenty twenty-two for fifty-seven thousand, twenty-seven dollars and ninety cents. A payroll warrant dated June ninth, twenty twenty-two for three million, one hundred fifty-five thousand, sixty-six dollars and fourteen cents. I know, I was like, phew, too. And an accounts payable warrant for June fourteenth, twenty twenty-two for a hundred nine thousand, nine hundred fifty-eight dollars and thirty-two cents. That is all.
Thank you, Mrs. Griffin, and welcome back aboard as a, as a.
Oh, you're welcome.
All right, Mrs. Trainer, her co-director will give us an assessment data presentation.
Okay, so here we are at our end of the year report for our data, and I'll go through pretty quickly. You have, in your possession, you have the large, the long format. This is the shortened format for the full school committee. We had a subcommittee meeting for a couple of hours that went over the data extensively. I'll go through the each grade level, give a little summary, then at the end summarize the whole piece. So we'll start off with looking at our kindergarten literacy growth. By the end of the school year, we had sixty-four percent of our students on grade level. And we saw our tier-three students decrease from twenty percent to eight percent. So earlier, Mrs. Griffin was talking about what these tiered pieces should look like, and these numbers are getting very, very close to what we expect to see, especially in tier three, which should only be three to five percent. And at the math level, kindergarten was off the charts. At eighty-six percent of our students are leaving kindergarten on grade level in math, which is really impressive. And our tier-three students are only at four percent, which is exactly where we would want to be in terms of what the expectation is for the three different tiered systems. So the expectation is this class, this particular group, is ready for first grade, and that we should continue to see positive results with this group going into first grade with such high information. At first grade, we also, we have fifty-nine percent of our students that are on task on grade level, and we did see a decrease in our tier-two by eleven percent. So we see our green growing through absorbing some of the, our yellow students, which we would attribute to our intervention.
It's way out of order. Sorry.
Kristin, sorry.
It's okay.
Oh, yeah, you gotta go. We're just doing iStation data, so that's why you're gonna see the skip of slides.
It's page six.
Yes, in terms of math, we, our le, our first grade class is leaving at eighty-three percent of the students on grade level for mathematics. And we decreased tier-three students. It was completely cut in half. So huge growth at the kindergarten and first grade level. We've got two really great cohorts going forward. Second grade was most impacted across, across the world in terms of having their kindergarten year interrupted by COVID, and then their first grade year interrupted by a large majority of the time spent at home with online learning for all of, all or most of first grade. So, but we still saw some great results. We have seventy-three percent of our second graders that are on target. And of course, this leads us to getting even closer in our accelerated plan. So seventy-three percent are leaving at grade level and seventy-six percent leaving math at grade level. So these numbers are getting higher and higher. Again, the expectation is that we hit pre-COVID levels, which would've put the large majority of our kids to eighty to eighty-five percent in the green coming into school. So we expect to see these numbers stay pretty high. In third grade, we ended our year at fifty-eight percent of our students on target for reading and forty-nine percent on target for math. So we've seen, you know, our fluctuation pieces here and there, but about half of our students are currently at grade level going into fourth grade. Our fourth grade students are, sixty-five percent are at grade level for our iStation literacy, and sixty-three percent are on target for math. So these numbers are creeping up. This, again, is an accelerated year along with next year in terms of getting our, our plan in place.
Could you just go back to that one?
Absolutely.
The, the January, is that thirty-one percent up top in the red?
Yes, it is.
And then that's down to what, fifteen?
It's down to nineteen percent.
Nineteen, okay.
So, yeah, we did see a mid-year drop, and if you were part of our mid-year committee meeting as well, we looked at, at those aspects and those pieces. So that actually leads us to what are our next steps look like for this year based on this current data. So what we decided to do is add in an additional math measure to help correlate our data. Currently, we only use iStation data. We're going to add in a second measure. We have found a second measure that will be budget neutral for us. It is the universal screener for number sense. It's a K to five. It's done one-on-one with students, and it is available for free. You can purchase the online version of it, which is quite pricey, but in talking with Millbury Schools, they, the first few years of using it, they said that it was perfect going through with on paper, and they got the same results.
So, correct me if I'm wrong. When we just looked at the school improvement plans at the beginning of this meeting, I know that was a long time ago, this hour, but did I see HMH math? And did I see that we use their benchmark assessments?
We do.
And are they online?
Yes.
So are they connected to WAGL? Are they connected to, like, we're able to see their measured reports? And are we using that?
So HMH is not our math. It's our ELA program. So, yes, our teachers give the readiness.
We have Envisions.
Yes, we have Envisions math. So in the Envisions math, yes, we are giving the benchmark at the end of the year. We had not been using it as our system for benchmarking in the past. The teachers have given it. But because it was kind of a new process for us, we did not, I did not go in and yet see it. It's unfortunately done by class. So once we're able to get it more like whole grade level, so teachers look at it, we look at it with teachers for their classroom, but we are not using it as, because it's not.
Does it have an online component?
It does. It's not, it's not a nationally normed piece. It's really a piece, the problem with it is that there's a readiness test at the beginning of the year.
Right.
But then at the end of the year, there's a benchmark test, so they don't align.
And they don't have one in the middle?
Right. They do have one in the middle, but that's a benchmark. So the readiness test, we liked, cuz then we got an idea of where kids were at for the start of the year. But then the next two tests don't correlate with that, so we really would love to reset and give the readiness test again at the end of the year to see if our students learned. And we weren't able to do that this year, cuz we'd have to clear the data. So our choice was wipe out the original data, and we got a little nervous about that. So when now we can actually house that data somewhere else, we can pull it out, house it somewhere else, then we can clear that data and have the kids retake the readiness test for next year. So we have data on our students. It just wasn't comparing.
So they took the readiness test?
They took the readiness.
As a summative test this year?
No, they did not. They took the benchmark test, and so they don't.
But is there a thought for them to take the readiness test for the previous year, like?
I know what you're trying to say. I know what you're trying to say.
Right, like, so, yeah, the fourth grade students, for example, they have a readiness test.
Yep.
But it could be, help me, guys, connect the dots here.
Well, a kid here, you have two choices. You could give it at the end of third grade.
Third grade, yes, thank you.
Yes, you could use it at the end. You could use grade fours at the end of third grade, but then we would have to provide access to our third grade teachers to the fourth grade benchmark system. And the way that it works inside of that program, that would be additional licenses would then need to be purchased. So then we thought if we gave the third grade readiness test at the beginning of the year, and then the third grade, the readiness test at the end of the year, we should then see significant growth because now we're comparing apples to apples, which is really what our plan will be for next year. If we were to do that, it's going to wipe out the original data, so.
I get what you're saying.
Yes, so the kids can't technically take it twice.
Not following.
Right. Once I take it out as a CSV file, put it into our new system, then I can wipe it out and feel confident that, yes, we have these scores saved in a reasonable space. Then we can wipe out that data, reassign it for next year. But this year, we didn't have a place to house the data in a way that would've made sense.
I got what you're saying now. I'm just slow. It's the hour.
No, that's okay. It's late, and I get that. I totally get that. So that is, it's another measure that we can add on for next year. It is computer-based, just like iStation. So we wanted something that was mimicked dibbles, where it was a one-on-one with the child to see where they were in the math scheme of life, so we're gonna add that. We're gonna increase time on learning math. We did this year, we, we tried to get to a sixty-minute block for the large majority of our grade levels. In looking at what some of our teachers were doing and looking at the way some of the schedules were built, we realized having two different times. Also, doing some math in the morning instead of blocking all our ELA in the morning and then having some math time in the afternoon. One would be Envisions math, and the other one would then be a blended learning, where we would add our ST math, our istation interventions, our small group work with our teachers. And then, if possible, we're gonna work on staggering those so that our math interventionists can then get into more, more classrooms, depending on when teachers schedule their station math. So that is our plan that we're going to be putting into place for those teachers. And we're gonna add two math interventionists, one at Chafee, one at Barton, which I know we've already discussed. This was budget neutral, doing, due to the positions we're already there. We're just repurposing teachers. We are going to look at adding an istation individualized interventions in grades two through four. So that, that will then counter, that will be another space that they can have within their blended learning. We are going to continue with ST math. This year, the, it will switch to the teacher's responsibility. This year, that was what our interventionist worked on to get that up and running. So now, this year, starting at the beginning of the year, all teachers will be trained in ST math, and then the classroom teacher will then determine how that works within their space and in their classroom. We are also going to talk about at least once a month, having data meetings by grade level. So this will be something new that gets worked into the teacher's work because by contract, I cannot take their prep time, so I'm going to be adding in a prep time to then take that for the time that our coaches, myself, the entire team, and interventionists then get to look at data as a whole. So whether this is mini trainings in istation, whether this is teachers pulling up that work, whether we work as a PLC and look at particular students to see where they are, where they're at, and if they are growing, and how we can support students as a whole. So we're looking at at least once a month. What will happen is the entire grade level will then go off with a breathe-for-change team, which does involve Kristen Hutchinson at these two levels, cuz she is the trainer. She will then pull the kids along with a couple of other teachers that are being trained at each school. They will then work with the kids on additional SEL strategies and yoga pieces in order to help with calming techniques while our teachers get a chance for data meetings. Amy was able to work this into her school last year, so now we're working this into our schools, our, our Chafee and Barton schools. So this is the package that we are putting together as part of our action steps for how we can continue to work with the data that we are seeing at the table. So any questions for, about Chafee or Barton's data or where we are going? Okay, fantastic. All right, so let's take a look at what's happening up at OMS right now. Our literacy is looking good. We have sixty-eight percent of our fifth graders on target. They are at, they're ending the year at grade level, and we did see a huge discrepancy in math. So unfortunately, our grade-five students, we have about a third that are in tier-two, which is way outside of the expected national average. And we have only about thirty-five percent of our students that are on target for, for the math space. In order to kind of, to do some research, go ahead.
So we had changes in math, and who delivered math in fifth grade this year, correct?
Changes in math? Oh, we had a teacher unfortunately need to go out.
Right.
For a knee replacement, was injured. Tried to talk it through.
We had, so I wonder if that's correlating to this data?
I wouldn't doubt it. When we have long-term subs in, although we greatly appreciate the work that they do, when we don't have our, our math teacher delivering math instruction, we, we know that that's a really challenging, a really challenging piece for students and for parents, so everyone starts to struggle within that aspect. We had some great people that were able to come and step in to do some work for us. We were able to pull some of our, our specific math interventionists to come in to support that teacher that was in there. But when we're pulling those people, then we're pulling them from the interventions we had them set for, but we, the, the team really rallied and pulled together. We had a few unexpected teachers out and kind of have a choppy year. But it could be the reason. We also know this is a larger class. In general, there are twenty-seven more kids in this grade, in this particular cohort than in all the other grade levels as well.
The grade, is there, is it grade seven that has one more section? Is there one more sec, like, an extra section in one of them, Amy's not here, in one of those middle school, like, levels?
Not that I'm aware of.
Never. Thought it's this one. Isn't this the big class?
This has big, more students in each class, but I thought there was an extra teacher when I looked. When I went through, I went through, I know this is tricky, but I went through the grade, like, the. Help me out. Yearbook, and I look at all the teachers, and I look at all the sections. I can't think. My brain is shut off at night.
Okay, okay. That's okay.
Oh, my gosh, help me. It's like, I feel like I'm playing charades. Um, sad, but I thought that there was an extra teacher in one of the other grades, so there was more sections, like.
Not that I'm aware of, because I, I.
So is there a way we can make, I guess, what I'm saying, is there a way we can make these class sizes a little bit smaller? And I know we just talked about.
Right, so this is something that we definitely talked about, and, you know, obviously, we would love to do this, but this is not elementary. I can add a fourth grade teacher, great, lower class size. You can't add a fifth grade teacher in lower class size.
You'd have to add.
I have to add a whole team. So that's, that's quite an expense. But then, after you add two teachers, let's say we added a team to sixth grade to help with the numbers. The problem is, I have to add four teachers to seventh grade.
Could they cross-team?
So we've, we've looked at, we've talked about a lot of these aspects, and the truth is, it's very complex and very complicated. So it, due to that and due to the expense that it would be, again, we can continue to look at it, but it would definitely have, it would, it would be challenging. It would be challenging.
So my only thing is.
Go ahead.
I'm so sorry.
No, it's okay.
It's just like our data's screaming, these kids need more help.
Right, it is. It is, and we are, you know, we have to look at a, a lot of factors within this space. So actually, let me move forward for one second, cuz the same thing.
Can I just ask you a question before you flip that? Why so many testing months?
Oh. So that's interesting. So what happened is, is that iStation, for the first time this year, was opened up fully to our teachers. So what happens is, is now every child, at the start of every month, or the first time they go on in month, they get a benchmark test. And then, if the teacher, or during their wind block time, so they have wind block time for intervention, what can happen is, is that now a child can go in and the work is at their level. So other school systems might use an i-ready or use STAR or MAP testing. In this case, these are interventions. So there were some math teachers that started to regularly use istation as a support for students during the wind block. So if maybe every other day I saw my math interventionist on the opposite day, you can go into your own intervention on istation. So you can see as the year went on, like, additional teachers started to use these as a support for students to get more work. So, but at the start of every month, that's what you saw.
So, but September, January, and April, all math teachers, is that everybody was tested? So those are the three?
Yep, so those are the three that we're really looking at in terms of that space. So, yeah, sorry.
No, no, you're so good. So what was, when the teachers see this data, what do they do with istation to support their students? Do they just put them in front of the computer again? Or they, they give them individualized interventions if they're tier-three or tier-two? Or they, they give them individualized interventions if they're tier three or tier two?
So there, there are two options. So one, we have our math interventionists that are pulling this data. And so what will happen is if you get this data, it comes up on your screen and let's say I click on someone's class. It's then gonna come up and it's gonna say, these four kids, alert, need help with solving real-world problems. So now that our interventionists can come grab those and then they can work together as a team and as a group, and that's what their intervention works on. For some of our kids that are kind of an outlier and maybe something their weakness number sense, which is significantly lower, um, you can have your interventions come in and work with that one child, but for the most part, they're put on to the istation intervention because it works both ways. So a teacher can print out the intervention and run the lesson that way, or a student can be put on. And it just depends on how many bodies we have and how many kids at the same time are in wind block, because that's when our interventionist is available.
It clearly looks like though, to me, that it's not working.
Yeah, it's not working.
So I feel like the model that we're using, probably can't use it next year, for that.
But there's, I think from our meeting the other day, there is a plan that Tara's gonna get to.
Yeah, we'll get to the plan, but yes, we.
So are we gonna change that model?
Yeah, yeah. So we will, we'll continue to look at the data, then we'll look at a plan. But, you know, we're in a big hole, so we have to be, we, we talk about being reasonable with the data and with the space. Um, in terms of their literacy overall, this group is at seventy-three percent. That is on grade level, which again, this, this just shows me that this group is, are a lot of capable learners that are within this space. So that we can really, the same supports that we put in place for literacy, we wanna kind of mimic for math. In terms of sixth grade math, we are at fifty-eight percent of our students that are on target. And then in literacy for seventh grade, hold on, did we hit math? Literacy is seventy-three percent, okay, sorry, and math is fifty-eight percent. I think I misspoke there. So that's grade six. So pretty on par for, you know, what's expected. Then we have, uh, seventh grade literacy, fifty-one percent of our students are on target. Um, we also had a teacher unexpectedly need to, um, go out for the year. So we lost a master teacher this year as well. So it got to be about December and then the teacher needed to take the rest of the year off due to a personal emergency. So we, again, we greatly appreciate long-term subs, but this is, um, you know, we lost a master teacher in this area as well. Um, in terms of seventh grade math, this is our second cohort group that also is significantly lower. So we're, our numbers are mimicking what our fifth grade numbers look like within this space as well. So again, that cause of our concern, we know, what do we do? Do we add additional teachers? How do we run these supports and these places? So, um, our next steps in order to support Oxford Middle School is to continue to offer Algebra I to advanced math eighth graders. So first, we have to address our eighth graders are coming back. They went to the high school, high school and one of the, um, perks with that, our top kids could then get Algebra I because it could be taught by an Algebra I teacher within the high school, which was a nice place for kids to kind of get ahead in math. When we brought them back to the middle school, we did not want to lose that opportunity for the kids. So we have now added, um, an Algebra I class. It's not really added, it was there, but it wasn't at the middle school prior, but it is now because we don't want to move backwards in the world of math. We then additionally added an accelerated pre-algebra class to seventh grade to support the eighth grade class. Now, the reason why these two are important is because, um, after we did the placement testing, we actually had fifty-seven students qualify for these programs, which is then gonna greatly reduce class size for our, our, um, regular seventh grade math and our regular eighth grade math. So we're actually pulling all of our top kids out, putting them in an accelerated space, and now we can lower the class size. We can get more kids what they need by getting kids out that can move at a faster pace and don't need to be bored in math class. While our other kids do need longer amounts of time to be working on, uh, repeated practice, then we're hoping that this is gonna help us balance that space. We also have our interventionists that would be working alongside with these teachers as well. So now we can use interventionists in some of the math classes. They're not needed now in all of them because some of them are accelerated classes, which then means I can have my, or we can have our, um, interventionists now work at additional wind blocks. So that if I'm the seventh grade teacher providing support, well, now we only need to be in, say, two classrooms, not the third. And then I can support in another wind block at another grade level. So now I have two math interventionists that can go in. So that is what we're hoping to pull for that support. We're gonna continue with SD math in grades five and six. Um, we are, talked about a little bit today, doing these interest surveys for fifth and sixth graders during the wind block, which is where we would like to create an advanced math cohort of kids. That will then support the seventh and eighth grade. My ultimate goal, of course, um, I would love to see, and my teachers should really be pushing that, we'd love to see fifty percent of our kids within these programs. I'd love to see fifty percent of our kids getting that advanced work. And I think that the more we grow this love of math and kids that love math, um, that put that interest survey down, as a fifth grader, I'm more likely to check off, I love math, um, in a nice private little survey, and then get them into these programs, find their buddies, find kids that have these similar interests. Same thing with our reading supports as well. We're gonna continue to support with S R hires for our math interventionists. We are also going to work with our, all of our math teachers across the board and encourage a common formative assessment. So one of the things we noticed is that our teachers were using little formatives exit tickets at the end of the day. What we thought would be a better system is to train them again on formative assessments and this time work with a common formative assessment. So if everybody in seventh grade gave the same math problem as their exit ticket, then we can compare data across. Then we can start looking at the strengths of teachers to help one another. Like, you know, Mrs. Forbes, your math class does so well on every geometry exit ticket, what are you doing, right? So, and she's just like, I don't know what I'm doing, this is how I talk, this is how I say it. And getting those teachers to then have more meaningful data to talk about in their data meetings. So they do have regularly scheduled data meetings, it's every other day. Um, opposite wind blocks, a core teacher is with their team. So we wanna then create a space where they are consistently talking about that data as math teachers, so that we can move forward in the world of math is really a, a big piece. Cause you can see that fifth grade and seventh grade, our, our numbers are tough. So we wanted to give teachers that time and opportunity to do that work.
So can I, can I just say, I mean, it's great that we're giving them time and that they're having the conversation. I guess what is the follow, like, who's, who's monitoring that? Who's asking for, what's, what did you discuss? What is the plan? Because, you know, the data is not showing that these discussions are improving much.
Right, so.
I saw some growth in certain parts.
Yeah, because we're not seeing it, that will be something that I can be more involved with now, with our, um, the, the push to be truthful will be with our seventh and eighth grade teachers, we'll continue with the fifth and sixth grade teachers as well. But I'm going to start holding seventh and eighth grade teachers more accountable because they're already using formative assessments. So pushing theirs to be common assessment, where I'll work specifically with fifth and sixth grade to be putting in formative assessments and the value of how, of why this is important. Because I should be able to predict my istation data long before my kids take the test. And I should already know what areas they're going to be strong in because it's, it's areas that I'm working in. And so I think those are the pieces, I can't say across the board because their teachers are slightly at different spaces. We also have master teachers in the world of seventh and eighth grade, they have to be math certified, where our fifth and sixth grade teachers are general ed. They might have a math degree or certification, but for the most part, teachers up through sixth grade, it's a general math, it's a general elementary degree. So we have to just be mindful that it's really our seventh and eighth grade teachers that are the master teachers and that our fifth and sixth grade teachers probably just need a little bit more support with formative assessments and using math.
Right, and to that point, um, you know, I brought it up when I was there, I brought it up af- again, I mean, we really, it's middle school. I know you have the elementary and the middle, you know, the junior high component. But really thinking about departmentalizing, I mean, I talked about that when I was there, particularly with the sixth grade, maybe the fifth grade, you still use that kind of team teaching, but really that departmentalized. I mean, it just now gives a teacher one content to focus on, and to Pal's point, like in my school, we, we have, you know, somebody teaches a couple of sections of six and seven. So you have like those swing teachers.
Yes, we are gonna have that at seven, eight.
Yeah, and right, that's what they do. And now you're just having conversations with one, you know, one person or two people, right? They're having the discussion as opposed to four on the team. And this one's doing it that way, that one's doing it, you know?
Yeah, I think I'll just have to relook, yeah, we'll relook at the state because technically a teacher cannot teach more than fifty percent in one area under a general degree. So if they have a math degree, yes, we can give them four sections of math. If they don't have a math degree, it's pushing the line because then we don't have highly qualified teachers teaching in their subject area.
It would be great for us to know how many of our teachers are highly qualified in that school.
Exactly.
And that's, and then we have to really look at hiring more highly qualified just for math.
Just for math.
It would be great for us to have that data as a committee to really understand what we have in our buildings.
Yeah, it used to be that requirement from the state. Again, it's now going to have to go back and relook to determine, you know, I, I'm not, not legally, but I don't know the other term, that like legally, that they can be teaching four sections of math. And so we just have to be aware. So I know that there were a couple of teachers that could teach four sections of social studies because they were social studies certified teachers, even though at the younger grade level. Again, like you said, we would have to really look at math. I'm hesitant to give somebody four sections of math that I don't know well in terms of their math.
Right, I'm not, I'm certainly not suggesting do it now, but it's a vision, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a movement.
Yes.
So then you just give people a heads up, like, listen, this is where we're going, we need, you know, ma- you know what I mean? Like, you need people to get certified in this content area if needed.
Absolutely. Yeah, I mean, we saw that push about ten years ago, twelve years ago, where they were, you know, looking at humanities degrees for social studies and ELA teachers to, to put that push into place, that you really need to be taking courses in these areas, that your general idea, your general degree is really great and it got you here, but now you need to get yourself, uh, more professional work, specifically in the areas that you're working in. And for a while, they did the math-science test as well. So again, just seeing what teachers are out there, but like Dave said, if we give you three years and say, okay, within three years, we're looking for math, we're gonna go to departmental, it's just, we can't make the switch really quickly because that's also really challenging. It's hard to find a sixth grade teacher or a math certified teacher that wants to go to sixth grade. So, um, not that it, not that it doesn't exist, but that is just a, a tougher pull. So this is really our, our space. Um, we're gonna expand istation to include grade eight. Um, now that it'll be back in Amy's building, things could be a little bit, uh, more on target. They were supposed to be doing it this year, a lot of miscommunication. Um, more my fault than anyone else's in terms of just, I should have communicated more clearly with the teachers that this is what I needed. Um, and then the last, we'll start to include the Envisions Benchmark Test. It should say readiness test, but once you hit sixth grade, it changes the name. Things get funky within programs, what they call things. So now this year that we realize like, okay, we can give the same one if we delete the data. And one of the teachers panicked because she accidentally deleted the data and then was like in tears and it's okay. Like, it happens, it's okay. Um, and so I think that that's, you know, that's space where we're like, oh, I'm sure it'll be fine, it'll save. And then it, it reset it, so we just don't want teachers getting upset. But we'll work on how we can make that work for next year. So this is our overall piece. Again, uh, I think that, you know, Pal is right, that needing the change for how we ran things this year for math, we need that, that push. And I know that Amy and I will then look to the schedule to determine, it might be better, um, although challenging, but it might be better to have our math interventionists freed up during wind block for each grade level as opposed to one being assigned to a grade level. Because if I can have three math interventionists at sixth grade wind block and three at seventh grade wind block and three at eighth grade, if we can, because those times are staggered, it does then not allow for someone to be in the classrooms with the kids and that's been a good support where they're in class and then the teacher, then the interventionist then says, okay, I can see these four are struggling and then pulls them to the back table and works them in that space. So unfortunately, it's like that.
And I wonder how much of that tiered type of instruction really does happen? Are if teachers are doing a lot of direct instruction and they're not doing grouping? So maybe that wind block is way more powerful, like you just said.
Yeah.
With those teachers.
Right, having more, yes, having more people available.
Cause I don't think they're getting pulled necessarily to the back of them, but I could be wrong.
Right, and I think it's the style of an interventionist. Like, everybody ha- every teacher has their own style, so a teacher may not, like you said, if a teacher's like, well, I don't want you to pull the kids in the back, I want them working independently. Or another teacher might say right away, like, okay, pull them right away, then the kids might be missing direct instruction. We don't really know the, the comfort level of each one. We know where all our interventionists are at every second of the day. We just don't know, you're right, how.
How effectively we're using them.
How utilized the teachers might be. Um, and we know that it can be a frustrating piece for both parties when my interventionist stands there for a half hour during direct instruction, waiting for them to know it'd be their turn, right? But where, it, it was an experiment this year, it was new into math interventionists. It was, you know, a good foresight of Amy's to be ready on the math end. But, you know, how we utilize that space and the, and the people that are there, it'll be a, a harder look this year to. Hopefully see.
Almost makes me think of like a co-teaching model if the interventionist is gonna be in the room.
Right, and then you know that, that also is a special relationship and it involves a lot of trust. And so that can be really challenging as well for a, a teacher to give up a little bit. So it can be hard. Okay, any last questions about OMS? Okay, so just the last little part real quick, um, for the high school, we can look at the AP scores. These are spring of twenty twenty-one scores. We do not have the current scores just yet. So, um, in looking at this, ninety-nine AP tests were administered last spring. Fifty-six of them were scored as a three or higher. Often colleges look for a four or five, but a three or higher is considered that passing score. Um, this past year, due to it coming off a COVID year, we only had fifty-five students in AP classes. But next year, we already have seen a jump to eighty-six. So I would like to say that this is fifty-five students and eighty-six students. The truth is, it's eighty-five seats and fifty-five seats. I do not know how many children have crossed over. I did not look at the list to see like, oh, this child's taking two APs. So it may not be eighty-six children, but there will be eighty-six tests delivered. Same thing with, in the spring of twenty twenty-one. I don't know how many of those are repeat kids, um, until I specifically look at it. But our numbers are improving and so we'd like to see that that is a big space. This year, we met with the teachers prior to the students making their schedules. So we met with the department heads, Mike and myself, met with them, um, explained that we would like teachers to talk specifically to students about making that stretch, um, to push themselves to try any of the AP courses that they might like to. And then when you go to science, your science teacher could recommend. We also then asked the guidance counselors to do the catch. So now a child goes in, creates their schedule, they had to meet one-on-one with guidance. And then as guidance looked at their previous grades and then would see like, wow, you've had an A, you know, in ELA the last, like, all three terms, how come you're only signing up for, you know, English two? Why don't I see, you know, AP Lit or AP Lang on your schedule? So we, it was like a double whammy, we tried to get that space. Then we had parents sign off, trying to get our parents to kind of take a good look at the child's schedule before then it was turned into, um, into guidance as a completed schedule. So we had Mass Insights come in, we have repartnered with them. They are a company that supports, uh, advanced placement tests and they support teachers. So they're the ones that give us the, college board gives us the curriculum, Mass Insight gives our teachers the training. So we've signed up to allow our teachers, any teacher who would like to within the high school, may go get trained this summer. Let's say I've always wanted to teach an AP Lit class, I can now go get trained for free. Well, it's for free because we're a part of their consortium now, we bought back into that. So any teacher can go and, and be a part of that. We also have a week-long program that students can join. So if I'm a little anxious, I've signed up for an AP course and I'm feeling kind of anxiety about it, let's say I sign up for AP Stats. Well, there's a, a summer space that kids can go to virtually and they go for two hours in the morning and they'll talk them, talk to them about what the course is going to be like, do a couple sample problems, sample work with them and then that kind of build the student's confidence. So when school starts, they know what to expect. It also helps to build, um, a great space for our teachers where they can find other, if I'm teaching AP, uh, US History, now I find all the other teachers in the state that are teaching AP US History and now I've got a group that I can, you know, rely on. We're a small high school, so we don't have four teachers teaching, we've got one, and they don't have a buddy or a partner. So it's a great space to, to, to fill, to create, create like an affinity group for you so that you have someone else that you can bounce ideas off of. Same thing happens with our students. So they get together with other students throughout the state, two or three times a year. Plus, if they start in the summer, they're now creating friendships outside of Oxford of other kids that are also involved in the same kinds of courses. So they can quiz each other, um, do these online platforms with one another and just kind of build it up for our kids and for our staff. So that's really the push. Pal?
So, I know we talked a little bit at the data sub-curriculum meeting about this, that teachers were speaking to students and that guidance was speaking to students, but I know I advocated personally that we would put something out to all families. I know we're talking about it tonight at school committee, but I feel like it's a little late. Cause I think there were a lot of students that could have been eligible, that some teachers just didn't have that conversation. I don't know how it fell through the wayside. I heard certain teachers advocated with their kids and spoke to them, and I heard others might have not. And then I know that guidance was supposed to do the catch. And I know, I just heard tonight that parents were supposed to sign off on those forms.
Yes.
And then return them. But I don't know when pa- parents were signing off, if they had a list of all those AP courses that fell for their child. So I really don't think we did a good enough job, I'm gonna be really blunt and honest, with informing the parents of these opportunities for their kids. I think we put the onus on the teachers to do it and guidance on the, but then we didn't equip the parents with like a list. So I don't know if it's too late, but I want our families to be aware, like, this is available. There's, if it's possible, kids can still sign up.
Yeah, so I sent that email after your recommendation.
We did, and I totally missed it, so I apologize.
That's okay, that's all right. I sent the email, I'll, I listed all the courses we're offering, letting parents know that AP Spanish will be new for next year, which I think is really exciting that we're gonna be offering that. And, um, we also, uh, linked in the student week-long course. If they were, like, parents were encouraging a child and a child was like, kind of anxious about it, then we could, you know, would say to the parents, encourage your child to go to these virtual cour- classes. And it shows them, they had a high percentage rate of kids that went there, then stuck with their AP course throughout the year. And so that. And so that email did go out, but it went out to our high school parents. I didn't send it to the whole district. So it went out to the parents that, that needed it. It was a one call.
High school, was it the eighth graders too?
I did not do the eighth graders because.
They're in the high school and they're eligible for the fall. So as an eighth grade parent, I didn't get it.
Right, so they're eligible for two of the.
A P Stats.
A P Stats and A P Computer Science.
Right, and so we just left out one-fourth of our school community.
Yes, because I was concerned that that would be really overwhelming for parents to get that because it listed all of the courses. And I did not, and I talked about that, you know, it linked to the program of studies in there that would say that these are the courses that kids could take. And I just felt like, again, um, it's not that I wanted to leave them out. I didn't want to overwhelm parents and there were only a couple that are offered. So I could email them out.
But I think too, we're in the business of access of education for all. And we can't make a determination that we're going to overwhelm people. We have to provide that transparency to every family so they are aware of what we're offering here. Otherwise, we're not doing our due diligence. So I really, I, I'm so sorry to be such a pain, but I really feel like our families deserve to see that. And there might be just a few students.
Interject it, you know, in fairness to, to Mrs. Trainor, like it's really the building principles responsibility to do this. And we're in a, we're kind of changing. It sounds like, it sounds like she will send it out. I know it's a little bit late. But there is still time for those that are invested and, you know, we can just make that statement. I mean, it's certainly, I don't think this is the way we wanted it to go, but good point.
I mean, if I didn't catch it tonight, would have any of them known?
I, I mean.
Would we have had students to follow that it would have happened?
Again, when you have a tr, change of leadership.
I know, but that's why we gotta do our due diligence all together as a team.
Well, right, but my point is like there are some, you know, new to the district, new to the district, like.
I get it.
There, there are some things that are going to fall through the crack. It doesn't sound like it was intentional. It sounds like.
No, I'm not saying it's intentional.
No, 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 I wasn't saying you were. But I mean, I think if she can send out an email to the eighth grade families tomorrow, just explaining, we didn't send it out in the bulk email last week because we didn't, you know, there was lots of offerings. Here's the two offerings that eighth grade has. If you're interested, here's who you contact. Because you can still add and drop, you know, beginning of year and.
Yes, we can. And that's what we're, and the schedule isn't complete yet. So that's the other aspect as well. So we have the numbers of the kids that have already signed up and parents that have signed off. The other aspect too is we have to keep in mind that there is a contract that students and parents need to sign. So, um, that means that if I sign my freshman up for A P Stats, um, we're not dropping the course. And I think that's something important that parents have to know, that the work will be challenging. Um, and we, it's been a policy in the past that I can just drop it when it gets hard and that's not what we would like to do this year. So that, and I had sent out that form for parents as well attached saying that students will need to, uh, no, I'm sorry. I said, I directed them to guidance. That if they would like their child to take it, they also need to, the child and parent. Because I do worry that parents get excited and they sign their kids up and they're like, hell, you're going to take this great course. And then the child's like, what are you talking about? And there are like pretty good sized numbers already in our computer science principles and our A P Stats courses because they're, they're typically classes that kids can latch on to. I don't have to be great at math to take A P Stats. I have to be a pretty good writer, but I don't have to be awesome at math and it could be a nice step in. So we typically don't see a ton of freshmen taking it, um, because we, we do kind of get their feet wet with just regular classes first or maybe honors classes and then move forward. But it certainly, yeah, I could definitely send the email out tomorrow to parents and just offer the two classes that typically eighth graders might take. Um, again, hopefully, to your point, this is not the first time they're hearing about it, just due to the fact that they would have had this scheduled, they would have had this process, they have already had to sign off on their child's space and they would have the program of studies that go along with the work. So that's the other piece when a parent makes the schedule, we do.
And I think that program of studies, and I could be wrong again, I don't think it's really clear what those A P courses necessarily are for different grade levels. I mean, I, you know, you, I know you're saying.
Right.
It is, but some years, some courses run, some years, some courses don't, and I think that's a hard thing for.
And there's some overlaps. So kid, a kid could take some A P courses tenth, eleventh or twelfth grade.
Right, and I think it's difficult for parents to navigate. So whatever we can do to make it an easier process, then we'll increase our A P participation, which I think is our ultimate goal.
Yes, I would like to.
It is, and that's what we've seen already.
Yeah.
Right.
So that's our goal. That's why we're partnering with Mass Insight.
Right.
Yeah.
So I just don't want, you know, we got some pretty bright eighth graders that.
Oh, we absolutely do.
May have been overlooked.
Yeah, that's, that's awesome. I totally get it.
Meeting with the department heads, they were all for it. They would love to see more kids in their A P classes, so. Trying to get everybody on the same page. It's great. All right.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome. So just again, we're increasing the amount of educators and we're going to increase the amount of students. So that's our ultimate goal when we look at our, our A P space. We have our data calendar all set for next year. It'll have to run by the new principal as well. But again, we want to get this information out, um, because the M C A S dates, you know, came out in February. So we just want to make sure that we can, you know, get a jump and move on these pieces. And so that all of our teachers will get this so that they're aware come September and we don't have these, now these holes or these, these pieces that, um, we didn't go out, something we haven't really had previously unless things went on to emails. And again, this is just our big, uh, all the stuff we just talked about. So all the, the changes that we're hoping to make next year across all the, all four schools and, uh, our plan, you know? And it's really that focus on that fifth grade group and that seventh grade group following those cohorts, seeing what those numbers look like. I'm also very interested in following our kindergarten and first grade that had very high numbers to make sure that those numbers continue. Because if we can keep that going, then they are our, they are our beginnings. They are our, they're, they're the basis of the core that now we're going to have that second year where they've had kindergarten and first grade, not COVID, you know, really impacted other than some S E L behaviors. But for the most part, academic wise, we should be right on track in that space. Meanwhile, we'll be picking up the S E L piece hopefully with the M T S S setup.
And the positive thing about the fifth and seventh is with the eighth grade moving down, you're going to keep that class.
That's right.
So you'll have all that data. You'll get M C A S data and you'll be able to have that, well, you know, communication amongst the seventh and eighth grade teachers. So I think that's great.
Yeah, we're really happy about that.
Any questions? Tara. All right, thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Tara. Uh, members forum, uh, Ms. Cook. Mrs. Forbes.
I'll be super quick. Uh, I just wanted to shout out to our graduates, thanking the staff also at the high school who put that together. Special thanks to Kristin Harvey. I know she did a lot of the behind the scenes work. Um, I wanted to, you know, publicly thank the members of the select board who were there, the three newly elected and also Norman LeBlanc, who was there to show their support for our students and community. And I was really excited to see that. And, um, congratulations to our new high school principal, uh, Rebecca, Miss, Miss, Mrs.?
Miss.
Miss Rebecca Zornicki. Can't wait to.
Thank you.
See what New Year, next year's got for us.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Griffin.
Same sentiments as Mrs. Forbes. Wonderful graduation. So nice to see, you know, our board of selectmen represent and come and support our students. That was awesome.
Yep, thank you. Burke?
Uh, just for tonight's meeting, I want to thank the students who came, Mr. Whitaker, his work on that. And, uh, the teachers and retirees were a bit honored tonight. It was nice.
And echo your sentiments again. Thank you to all of our teachers that came tonight too, everybody.
Yeah, and just real quick, congrats to the grads, uh, graduates of twenty twenty-two last Friday. Uh, it was, it was excellent. Um, what was it? Two Fridays, two Fridays.
Two Fridays, yeah.
Um, I do want to thank Chairman, uh, Norman LeBlanc, Vice Chair Amy Frick and Members Tim Moriarty and Robert King for coming out. It was great to have them, uh, with us. Uh, really, really appreciate that. To, um, uh, to Corey's point, thank you to the five students who came out with Mr. Whitaker. Thank you to Mr. Whitaker. Thanks to the staff, uh, uh, members for coming out and supporting Mrs. Davis and, and their cause. I, I just want to repeat that we value and thank you for all you do each and every day. Um, and, you know, we're, we're all in this to do what's best for kids and be fair. And, you know, I thank you for everything you do each and every day. And I do want to announce that on Saturday, uh, this is coming up Saturday, the eighteenth, from eight-thirty to ten. Um, many of us members will be across the street at Carbuncle for our last coffee and conversation. Uh, we are able to secure the beach house or outside of the beach house before they have their grand opening. So that will be on Saturday.
What time again?
Uh, eight-thirty to ten. Um, and our next regularly sk, oh.
Can I bring up one more thing?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, and you guys might not like me, but I'm going to say it anyways. Um, one thing that I noticed and I did bring it up through the chair through email and of course I couldn't inform the rest of the committee of my concerns because I'd violated open meeting law, but I did share my concern with the superintendent as well, was that I saw that our calendar was changed, um, and it was alluded to past practice that students would be let, let out for half days for exams. And I did hear from several, several, several people, um, that they don't remember this happening for eighth graders and ninth graders and tenth graders and eleventh, maybe the seniors got out early. And I looked a little bit deeper and even asked about transportation and what was our past practice? Like, did we have buses come pick up kids? Because there were half-day dismissals. And found out that it was not the case. So like seniors could probably arrange their own transportation. So my only concern is, and the reason I'm bringing this up tonight, you know, like things are the way they kind of have rolled. But I, I definitely shared my disappointment because we approved the calendar as a committee and we worked together as a committee as a team. And I reached out to M A S C, full transparency, and discussed it with them. And they agreed one hundred percent that it should have been a discussion here. So, you know, I'm not saying that I would vote against the decision that was made, but I just think that we should have a discussion. It, that's just how we do it. It's just the way that every school committee does it throughout the state. Um, and I looked into other calendars for other communities, Boston Public Schools, for example. They do have on their calendar, you know, certain, certain grades that might be taking exams that might get out earlier. But there is a lot in there, like the time on learning requirements and all sorts of other things. And we do have eighth grade students in here and that makes it a little bit more of a complicated situation. So. It just made me very concerned. So next, you know, we already approved our calendar for next year. But if we're going to talk about this happening again, then maybe we need to have another discussion about the calendar we already approved for next year.
Right, and as you and I discussed, that was going to happen. The superintendent asked me, I said, just do what you normally do. So if anyone's going to take the bullet, it will be me. He inherited the calendar. He's inherited a, a very, uh, trying year. Uh, just thought for everybody, just do what had, they had done pre-COVID and that we would.
But I don't think it was the way that.
It absolutely was. I was in this district.
It was a half-day for all.
Half-day.
I was a freshman. It was like that. I transferred here from Bay Path and when I was a freshman, it was like that.
Like that.
It was half, it was a half-day for all grades.
All grades.
But never on the calendar to record.
Right.
Yeah.
So students were just dismissed from camp, campus as half-days, but we never recorded it on the calendar.
Because it was a full day of school.
But the students were not here.
For every other like.
Just four grades out of twelve.
Right.
No, I get that. I get that. But even looking at other district calendars throughout the whole entire state, if students leave for certain schools, it is designated there that they had half-days.
Not our district.
I know, I know that we've done.
Saying in my district, the seniors leave for half-days for exams. It's not documented on the calendar.
How about other grades?
They do exams up at the high school and they have half-days as well, I believe, yeah. But again, it's a moot point, what we're going to do moving forward with new leadership up here. They're going to take a look at final exams, mid-year exams. Is it even applicable to do anymore? Is it even what the vision of this new leader wants to do? And then if they decide to do half-days, I know Superintendent Lucas already has it written that he's going to come to us with it. It was something that he asked me about. Uh, I said, just do it. So if anyone's going to take the bullet, it will be me and we'll move forward. Okay? All right, I do have to open the floor for public comment. I'm going to close the floor for public comment. Any future business? Our next regular meeting is Monday, June, July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two. Any topics? We still have several weeks, so you can email me and, uh, please C C Helen on it and the superintendent. Uh, at this time, uh, we'd like to go into, uh, executive session pursuant to M G L, Chapter thirty-eight, subsection twenty-one A, subsections two and three. The committee will enter executive session to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel, superintendent of schools, and to discuss strategy respective collective bargaining with the Oxford Education Association and the Oxford Clerical Workers Union as is necessary to protect the negotiating position of the public body. The committee will exit executive session and adjourn the public meeting without conducting any further business. We do need a motion to, uh, go into executive session.
Give motion to go executive session.
Second.
Second, any discussion? Open the vote. Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Mrs. Forbes.
Yes.
Mrs. Griffin.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
I'm a yes. We are in executive session. Have a good night.